By the way, congratulations, Councilwoman Anderson. Does that sound weird? Councilwoman, you're gonna get used to it, I love it. Congratulations, we're excited to have you. This is your first official meeting, correct? Okay, and that would be Word 6. All right, congratulations. That's awesome.
Okay, um, let's see. We are, Madam Clerk, we will now open the meeting for Wednesday, November 20th.
And we're gonna start with the Pledge Allegiance to the Flag. I'm gonna have my dear friend, Mr. White. Can you lead us in the guest you? You both are, you both are Mr. Whites right here. I see you both.
I'll learn what you said when I get home.
Yes. Okay, here we go.
Madam Clerk, I'm gonna send it to you for roll call.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, calling roll for Wednesday, November 20th. Sorry, our agendas don't have roll call on. All right, Councilmember Taylor, Dour.
Here.
Martinez, Ebert, absent at this time. Reese.
Here.
Anderson, Shebe.
Here.
Madam Mayor, you do have a quorum of the Reno City Council.
Okay, thank you so much. And I believe, Madam Clerk, you wanted to take an item before public comment, is that correct?
Madam Mayor, if we can poll our consent agenda items and then we can go into public comment, that would be great.
Okay, and the reason we wanna do that is that we notify the public which items will be heard if they wanna stay for that item or not. So at this time, I'm gonna start with Councilwoman Taylor, do you have any items to pull?
None for me, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Martinez.
Nothing for me, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Madam Anderson. All right.
Thank you, nothing, Madam Mayor.
Nothing today, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Then may we approve?
I think we're gonna, are we gonna hold approval?
Okay, we'll hold, so nothing is pulled, so that notifies the public.
Okay, and then we'll just come back to that, Madam Clerk.
Perfect.
Go into public comment.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, we're moving into Item A3, Opening Public Comment, which is our first item today. Members of the public may hear, observe, and provide public comment virtually by registering through the following link, which can be found on reno.gov/meetings. HTTPS colon forward slash forward slash L I N K S period R E N O period G O V forward slash C O U N C I L 11 hyphen 20. It should be noted for those in the audience that comments are to be addressed to the mayor and council as a whole. Comments heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the council's agenda. Council may not take action upon any matter not agendized on today's agenda. When you're called on for public comment, please state your name for the record and begin speaking. The timer will begin when you say your name and you will be afforded three minutes. For those participating in chambers in accordance with Council Rules 6.3.11, while in this room, please be respectful. Disrupted behavior from audience members like clapping, yelling, whistling, et cetera, which impede the meeting, may result in a warning issued by the presiding officer. If this behavior continues, you may be removed from chambers. If you're an attendee in the Zoom meeting and would like to make public comment, please raise your hand at this time. Madam Mayor, our first public commenters today is a group from the UNR Honors College.
Yes, so we have future senators, future presidents, future mayors, council members here with us today. I was fortunate enough to attend an event that they were speaking at and I was so inspired and impressed. This is our future, so we are excited to have you today. Before I start that, I wanna recognize, we have Councilmember Abbott in the House today. Hello, Councilman from Sparks, thank you for being here. Okay, we're gonna start with public comment from our Honors College, love to, love to welcome you.
City of Reno, thank you for inviting us and showing your passion for education today. My name is Shaiyan Hosseini, I'm a senior student at the University of Nevada Reno. The Honors College at the University of Nevada Reno is serving more than 1,100 of the best, brightest, and the most hardworking students that have chosen our institution for their higher education. The Honors College is a talented incubator and a supporter that supercharges the undergraduate experience for UNR students. Our students turned down NYU, Michigan, and Stanford to get the best level of personalized education here in Reno. We have a 90% six-year graduation rate, which is 30% higher than the general university. Our cumulative GPAs every semester average above 3.7. And nationally honored students have a 15% higher graduation rate than similarly qualified non-honored students. Our students have the opportunity of taking core classes with only 25 students, which otherwise is only offered with 200 students. And it can create personalized experiences and projects out of any course that they wish to take at the university. Throughout the 60-year history of the then honors program and now the Honors College, benefits such as community mentorship, national competitive fellowship workshops, and international travel opportunities have provided the students from all backgrounds, disciplines, the opportunity to thrive in any ways that they wish. As a student and a member of the Board of Directors of the National Governing Body of Honors Colleges and Programs, I'm extremely proud to say that our Honors College at the University of Nevada Reno is among the best honors colleges for students service and racial, generational, and gender diversity. In 2019, the Honors College served 450 students. Now in 2024, only the freshman class is 400 students, making us the fastest-growing college, school, or program at the University of Nevada Reno. Each of these students have the opportunity to receive once-in-a-lifetime mentorship from career professionals in their field, travel to Asia, Europe, or South America to deep dive in cultures, and to do interdisciplinary research. They have access to on-demand help and advising for anything they're applying for, from scholarships and internships to jobs, research grants, and nationally competitive fellowships. Thanks to the opportunities provided to us by the Honors College, I've been able to achieve things that I didn't think were possible for me. I've gained experience in managing large diverse groups of more than 20 people. I secured two research grants, conducted academic and industry significant research. I've completed four internships in tech, startup, consulting, and venture capital worlds. I won three hacking competitions and judged two coding competitions. My friends have traveled to Cambodia, Sri Lanka, and Ecuador, and Spain on full ride scholarships. One of them has five academic papers published, the other one has 35,000 downloads on the App Store. Throughout all of these experiences, the most consistent thing has been the presence of the Honors College support. The experiences we have gained assures me that once we graduate, we'll be able to support ourselves and give back to our community. Now I want to introduce Yahira, who's going to explain how fellowship support provided by the Honors College helps realize the ambitions of our students.
Great job.
Madam Mayor, before we continue, if we can take a brief recess, we're having some audio issues online and I just wanna make sure that the recording is getting captured accurately. So if we can have a five-minute recess, that would be requested.
Sorry. Nothing like being halfway through a presentation and then whoop, whoop, stop.
And we're ready to reconvene if you are.
Hi, and thank you, Shaiyan, for that introduction, and good morning, City Council Mayor. My name is Yahira Dircio, and I'm a first-generation Latina in my last year of my microbiology and immunology degree and the current president of the Honors College Student Council. For many students, the path to success can feel uncertain. We have ambitions and goals, but the resources to achieve them can sometimes feel out of reach. And this is where the Office of Undergraduate Fellowships comes in, bridging the gap between potential and opportunity. The Office of Undergraduate Fellowships is housed in the UNR Honors College and is the only one of its kind in Nevada available for students in higher, in the higher education system. And it helps students achieve their professional and academic dreams. For myself, I began my honors journey thinking I would pursue medical school, but that was mostly because I didn't really know what was out there for me. However, through the Office of Undergraduate Fellowships, I found my love for research and pivoted towards a research career. And my current research focuses on the rap, on the development of rapid test diagnostics from infectious diseases. And my current project is focused on the Ebola virus, one of them. But without the Office, I wouldn't have been able to earn a competitive research award from the National Institutes of Health, which provides me with an annual stipend of $14,000 along with travel funds. This Office provides so much more than just guidance. It provides a personalized approach to uncovering each student's unique strengths, whether that's assisting through finding national scholarships or supporting research grants and travel awards. The staff ensures that no student's potential goes unnoticed. Within the past two years, the amount of students that have applied for these competitive fellowships has increased in the Honors College. And so far, among those, we've had one Truman Scholarship winner and one finalist, a Goldwater Scholarship winner, three Gilman recipients, a Fulbright recipient, and a variety earning the Critical Language Scholarship and the Teach for America Award. And by applying to these competitive fellowships, our students are not just competing against their fellow honors students, they're competing against students all over the country, including those that are from the Ivy Leagues. The Office also offers other honors classes that focus on research development and fellowships, along with internships that help students gain experience in marketing and mentorship, and opportunities to conduct research abroad, like how Shaiyan mentioned, in Sri Lanka and Ecuador. They wa, the Office walks alongside students through every step of the process, helping craft personal statements and prepare for interviews. Their workshops and writing sessions are, and one-on-one consultations create a sense of community where I had, I and many others have felt supported. And every student who has worked with them, including myself, knows the amount of time and hours and drafts that take, that goes into each application before we submit the final version. And the process for applying a fellowship is often a journey of self-discovery, learning how to articulate our passions and reflect our accomplishments and envision our future impact on the world. And through their mentorship, I didn't grow just as, I didn't just grow as an applicant, I grew as an individual. Any success story is a testament to the profound impact of the Office of Undergraduate Fellowships on countless students. And I just wanted to explore, express on behalf of all the students who have been touched by the Office, our heartfelt gratitude. Because it's been a catalyst for transformation, we're in a place where our aspirations take flight and where the impossible becomes possible. Thank you. And now I introduce Celestro Bliss, who will focus on student leadership opportunities in the Honors College.
I love that, great job.
Good morning, City Council. My name is Celestro Bliss, I'm also a first-generation Latina, I'm also Yahira's roommate, so we grew up here together. I'm in my senior year as well, also in microbiology, I copied her a little bit, not gonna lie. But I'm pleased to talk to you about the strength and leadership students are given at the Honors College. At the Honors College, we take pride fostering leadership amongst students. It's not just about academic excellence or achieving personal goals, it's about shaping the next generation of leaders, both in their academic fields and in the world around them. One of the ways the Honors College accomplishes this is by putting students into leadership positions. As student leaders, we're given the responsibility to represent our peers, but to actively, but also to actively work towards ensuring their success. I'm honored to serve as the Vice President of the Honors College Student Council, where my role is to guide and support my fellow students in their academic journey. But this isn't just a job we take lightly. Being a leader means listening, understanding, and being proactive. Our council is more than just a body of student representative, we are a bridge of the student body and faculty. We make sure that every student feels seen, supported, and equipped to succeed, whether it's providing resources for academic success, organizing events that foster a sense of community, or simply offering a listening ear to someone who needs it. We work tirelessly to create an environment where all Honors College students can thrive. And as upperclassmen, we have the privilege of sharing what we've learned along the way, whether it's study tips, time management strategies, or how to make most of the resources available to us. But the leadership at the Honors College isn't just about managing responsibility or organizing events, it's about setting an example. We are, we are here to inspire others to take initiative, to empower them to become leaders themselves, and to encourage them to make a positive impact, both within our community and beyond. An example is myself, of course. Outside of being the Vice President, I am the lead undergraduate student in my research lab at the university. I have the privilege of guiding and supporting my peers in their lab tasks. My position is a direct result of the Honors College emphasis on cultivating strong leaders and providing opportunities to take on greater responsibilities. Through this experience, I am able to enhance my problem-solving skills, improve communication with my fellow peers, and contribute meaningful, meaningfully to our ongoing research project. Even if you don't have the experience in leadership, the Honors College at the university provides students with invaluable leadership opportunities. Through over 70 possible leadership positions outside the Honors College Student Council, such as Honors Ambassadors, Peer Coaches, and the Leadership Focus Course, Honors 110, these course, these roles are designed to help students develop critical leadership skills while actively contributing to the Honors College community. With the support of our dedicated honors faculty, students are given the guidance and resources necessary to grow as effective leaders, empowering them to take on meaningful leadership positions both within and outside of their academic environment. In conclusion, leadership in the Honors College is more, much more about holding a title. It's about creating a supportive, dynamic, and inclusive environment where every student is empowered to succeed. As a student leader, we are dedicated to that mission and I'm so part to be, so proud to be part of that community. Now I introduce our final speaker, Beau, who will talk about mentorship and how people in the community of Reno can contribute.
Nice job, good, great.
Thank you, Celeste. Good morning, Mayor, Councilmembers and guests. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. My name is Beau Bush, and I'm a senior at the University of Nevada Reno. As a member of the Honors College, I've had the privilege of experiencing firsthand how education and community can work together to create meaningful opportunities. The Honors College has not only supported my academic growth, but has also connected me to the broader Reno community, opening doors that have profoundly shaped my professional and personal development. The Honors College is more than just an academic program, it's a collaborative effort to foster talent, curiosity, and innovation. At its core, it aims to prepare students not just for their future careers, but to actively contribute to the success of the city they live in. What makes it truly unique is its ability to connect students with real-world experiences through mentorship, internships, and partnerships with local leaders and organizations. These connections don't just transform the lives of students, they strengthen Reno's fabric as a community. My fellow peers who are here today and I have witnessed this impact firsthand. Through the Honors College, I secured roles with Startup NB, Nevada statewide startup incubator, and the Sierra Angels, an angel investment group based in Incline Village. These roles have allowed me to work closely with Reno and Nevada-based companies, providing them with the support and resources they need to grow. At Startup NB, I've had the opportunity to assist local entrepreneurs in navigating the challenges of launching and scaling their businesses. With Sierra Angels, I've conducted due diligence, evaluated innovative ideas, and played a role in deploying capital to support promising companies in our region. These experiences have not only shaped my understanding of startups and venture capital, but have also deepened my connection to Reno's thriving startup ecosystem. I've seen firsthand the incredible potential our city holds as a hub for innovation and entrepreneurship. I'm proud to have contributed to this growth, and I'm grateful to the Honors College for helping me find these opportunities to make an impact. The Honors College approach benefits everybody involved. Students gain hands-on experience, refine their skills, and develop a deeper understanding of what it takes to contribute meaningfully to their chosen fields. Local organizations gain access to a pool of motivated, innovative thinkers who are eager to learn and make an impact. And the community benefits when these students, inspired by their experiences, choose to stay in Reno and contribute to the growth and success. This is where your leadership and partnership are invaluable. The Honors College is eager to collaborate with you to create new opportunities for internships, shadowing, and mentorship programs that connect students to the heart of our city. These opportunities allow students to develop professionally while directly contributing to Reno's growth as a hub of innovation, business, and community development. By strengthening the collaboration between Reno leaders and the Honors College, we can open even more pathways for students to learn and contribute. Today, I invite us all to consider how we can continue building this bridge between education and opportunity. What partnerships can we foster? What roles can students play in helping solve challenges or drive new initiatives? As leaders of Reno, you've already demonstrated a deep commitment to fostering growth and opportunity. The Honors College is prepared to build on that commitment, ensuring that students are not only prepared to succeed, but also equipped to contribute meaningfully to our community. We look forward to working with you, develop this collaboration, and explore new ways we can support each other's goals. Whether it's through serving on an Honors College committee, becoming a mentor, developing opportunities for student engagement, or countless other ways you can get involved, together, we can ensure that Reno remains a place where students, businesses, and the entire community can thrive.
Wow, you seem like a senator, for sure, already. Madam Mayor, great job. Just a quick question for those folks, I just wondered, they're all in the Honors College, and I wondered if they could say how you get in the Honors College? Because I'm sure people are listening. My husband was in the Honors College in another state, another university, but I don't know what the setup is here in the rules.
We have two ways of admitting students as of now. The first way, we have an application that students can apply for, actually, our presentation has a QR code that could lead to that. It also has a lot more information about us. We don't require any minimum GPA or minimum test scores, but we do wanna see those numbers from the students who apply. But we want a two-reference from them and a personal statement in that application. The other way is that university provides scholarships, and the highest level of scholarships they provide is a presidential scholarship. The recipients of those get offered admission to the Honors College automatically, and they can accept that.
Thank you. That's great. And we also have the wonderful Dean, Mr. Matt Means. Would you like to, are you proud, you feel like a proud Papa?
Every single day, multiple times, yes. I, as you can tell, it's a great pleasure for me to be able to work with these students and see them grow over the course of four years. The four years go by very, very quickly, and knowing that they are going to be leading our society helps me go to bed with a very big smile every night. Our world is in good shape.
Oh, that is wonderful. Thank you so much for being here, we appreciate you. I was just blown away whenever I came to your event and really wanted people to see your future. And like you said, we're in good hands.
Thank you for the invitation.
Thank you so much, thank you. And also, Councilman Reese, you have some students in the, in the gallery?
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor, yes. If my students can just wave.
There you are, hi guys.
I got four, one in the back. I have the privilege of being an adjunct professor at the university, so up there, you know, once a week and meeting with students. Thank you so much for the presentation from the Honors College. There's a lot going on at the University of Nevada Reno, and it's really something to be proud of, of course, with our, I can't say it, sesquicentennial, 150th year. That's a really, really neat experience, and it's been a privilege to be a part of it, so thank you so much, and thanks to my students for being here.
Yeah, that's great, we always love when the students come, because we really hope that one day you're sitting in our seats. So, it's not stressful at all. Anyway, thanks you guys, appreciate you. All right, Madam Clerk, I'm gonna send it back to you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Our first public commenter today is Mark Markell, followed by Paul White, followed by Terry Brooks.
Good morning, Mark, nice to see you. Been a while.
I don't know why.
We notice when you're not here.
What?
We notice when you're not here.
Oh, I, I, thank you. Good morning, Madam Mayor, City Councilmembers and City Manager. My name is Mark Markell, I'm a current Reno resident. Back in 1989, I, I, I got a drunk driving crash, I was a passenger. And anyways, this being the holiday season, you, you don't wanna drive drunk with, with anybody, you don't wanna drive drunk, period. But, but you, you can take away all the fun of the holiday seasons if you do, and that would be a toll drag. I, I, I rolled eight times and was ejected out of the vehicle, had a coma for a month. I, I'm sorry for, that didn't happen to me, but I, I just don't wanna see this happen to anybody else. I collect SSI, so I collect all your pe, I, I, I'm supported by all you people. So hopefully, I'm doing a good job and expressing myself. I know I don't talk well, but I, I just wanna express to my part, earn my SSI. And, and I, I'm very, very committed to talking about drunk driving. I go out to Spark and talk, so I, I, and I'm volunteer for the victims in back, so. So I, I do my part for the community, they help for me, and that's a good thing, I'm very grateful for that. So I'm doing my part, and I just don't wanna see anybody get in the car with a drunk driver and ruin the holiday season, thank you.
Great job, Mark, important message.
Thank you.
Paul White, followed by Terry Brooks, followed by Farah.
Paul White, I just wanted to follow up on a few items that came up at the last meeting that didn't really get closure. First would be just about exactly a week from this morning, because the council still has not moved to fully empower the RPD, to fully enforce laws against vigorously public drugs, public nuisance. A man was murdered just right outside your door, as you know, around lunchtime a week ago. This was avoidable. The person charged with the murder is what's known as a frequent flyer. In other words, he was picked up all the time. Obviously, the laws were not fully enforced all the time with him, or he would not have been on the street. So because they were not willing to forcibly remove this man, a man died, murdered brutally. Ms. Ebert happened to make a comment after I spoke last time, and you heard her, and she said how she had been out with the police, and in mentioning how to deal with the homeless and the law, she said she was for it, but not to, I wouldn't forcibly haul him away, she said. And this should be very concerning to all of you and the city attorney as well. Ms. Ebert, like all of you, has sworn to enforce the law. And she's saying I'm not gonna remove him, which makes kind of a problem, because what we need right away through the city attorney and the district attorney is either a complete retraction of Ms. Ebert's statement that she would not do to fulfill the oath she swore, or if she's not willing to do that, then she needs to be resigned or be removed from office. So we'll be checking back with you on that. And the final thing was just to update you on the idea of how, how is it to communicate with the board, especially the mayor, to schedule meetings? And you heard the mayor two of the la, two times in the last month speak of her willingness to meet. So I followed through with what you said, and I contacted your office and left a message with your assistant. As you said, you'd be interested and willing to do. Today's day number eight, and I've heard nothing, so back to you.
Thank you, Mr. White, I appreciate you. Mr. Culpin will get with you. I don't know where he is, maybe Rebecca, you can find him. He'll get with you before you leave. Thank you, Mr. White. Okay.
Terry Brooks, followed by Farah Downey, followed by Stephen White.
Good morning, it's me, Terry Brooks again. And today's presentation is about different people's behavior when it comes to discrimination. A lot of people learn to behave in a lot of different ways, just like a lot of people communicate in a lot of different ways. Some people just wanna sit down whenever they wanna sit down, while other people will only sit down when they are told to sit down. Some people have to sit down if they are going to talk, while other people have to stand up if they are going to talk. Some people add to what they say by using facial expressions, while other people use their hands to make such expressions. Some people think it's courteous to offer people gifts, while other people think it's rude to offer people gifts. Some people think it's polite to open doors for others, while others think, others think it's rude to open doors for others. Some people think it's rude to knock on someone's door, while other people just keep on knocking until someone opens that door. Some people will leave someone else's house whenever they want to, while others don't think it's polite to leave until they are told to. A lot of people refuse to eat certain kinds of foods, but people like me will eat any kind of foods. A lot of people will not help themselves to someone else's food, but will only accept it if someone hands them a plate full of food. And then when they eat that food given to them by the host, they intentionally make burping noises as a way to compliment the host. People are often discriminated against because of all of these behaviors. But if people all just accept each other, then they would understand all of these behaviors. I would like to thank you all for listening to me today, and I would have brought some food for y'all, but I'd have probably eaten it all on the way.
Thank you. Terry, I always love your public comment, where are we at?
Forty-three, just so you know, I've only got three more chapters to go.
Wow. Okay, and perfect, we, I got you on record.
Farah Downey, followed by Stephen White.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'm glad that Donald's not here, because I moved to Spark, so I felt like I was cheating, so I wanted to apologize for, so he left, so I was like, okay, maybe I'll get them.
They noticed too.
My name is Farah Downey, I'm here to speak on a couple of things today. I was compelled to come at the last minute, and I just wanted to, one, say congratulations to everybody who retained their seats, or a new seat, Brandy, go girl. And two, I wanted to make a small quip about, okay, everybody that knows me knows that I'm in housing, and knows that I'm in the, on the front lines, in the streets, doing what it takes to either help people obtain, retain, or sustain permanent housing. Can I say thank you for the Lakemil Lodge and what the city... Can I say thank you for the Lake Mill Lodge and what the city has done and the action that it's taken against that and the owners? I know that it's displaced a lot of people, but I would like to give accolades to Monica and her, and Jana and the team up in the Housing Department here at the city. Um, so I'm really, really grateful for that. I also want to comment that I am grateful for everyone's availability. I heard comment that people aren't available. I've always been able to reach out to every single one of you. Um, okay, and two, or maybe three, I don't know. Um, I'd like to come and say I saw that item D2 Jacobs Entertainment was doing a status update. And so I decided to not really comment on that, but just maybe give my own update and maybe a little character reference of something maybe you guys don't see from the other side. Um, as I've become in the last three years, a more strong and intellectual businesswoman, what I'm hearing and what I'm learning is that business is not always about the deal. Nine times out of 10, it's not about the deal. It's about the person or the human behind the deal and the person and their character. So specifically Jeff Jacobs in this scenario, if those who do not know, I used to run predominantly most of the motels that were located on Center Street, the Townhouse, over on Arlington, all those before they came down. I was 300 pounds and I was living with cockroaches and bedbugs and was nearly murdered. And when Jacobs Entertainment came in and purchased up those motels, it caused a lot of narrative that it was doing an injustice. Well, I can tell you now that I stand before you as a CEO of a nonprofit organization, I also am a homeowner. And the people that support Jacobs Entertainment is not only supporting what the deal is, but the person and the character. Now let me tell you in the last minute about a nonprofit organization called Redirect Outreach. Now they have partnered with, um, Nevada Elite Wrestling, and these are two nonprofit organizations that help young children from boxing, physical fitness, nutrition, gives them a secondary, a place to be, a home. Now let me tell you why Jacobs Entertainment is entwined with these nonprofits. These two nonprofits decided to join recently and help, they are getting people and little girls out of these motels and getting them their scholars into colleges. Now they needed a building so that they could join. Jacobs Entertainment donated a 20,000 square foot building for thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars under market value each month so that these two nonprofits could flourish and help our children and our community. So being somebody that was affected by the movement, I want to give accolades to every single person that's taken negativity and that false narrative of supporting this progress. And let me tell you, when you're supporting the movement that Jeff Jacobs specifically is directing in our community, you are helping people like myself that were stuck in these motels, these children that are there now, they are now have a chance. So from beginning to end, when you're supporting, um, the, the deal, you're supporting the character, and I'd like to stand up here and say directly, anything Jacobs right now with the city, God bless you and please keep moving forward. So when you're voting for anything Jacobs Entertainment, you're really voting for the legacy of these children that don't have a shot. And I just wanted to stand up and give my own update. So that's what I wanted to say and thank you guys for being available. I appreciate you.
Sorry, I almost. Thank you.
Stephen White, followed by Sam Gettle, followed by Mac Rossi.
Good morning, Councilmembers. For the new members, uh, my name is Stephen White, longtime advocate for artistic freedom in America. For the last 28 years, I've fought the battle for artistic freedom across this country. I've been involved in three winning federal litigations that have defined the First Amendment rights of artists. And you know, the fine arts represent the very culture, the heritage, the beauty and the very soul of a society. And throughout history, the downfall of all of the great civilizations have been preceded by government takeover and the loss of artistic freedom. And that sadly is what's going on here in America today. The philosopher Plato said at death more than 2,000 years ago when speaking before the forum, he said, "They have long known of its ability to reach both the intellect and the emotions. Have sought to control the arts to serve the interests of the state." You don't think that's happening here in the United States? The state of Nevada itself is forcing artists illegally, forcing artists under licensing restrictions, forcing artists to place a tax on their protected speech and forcing artists to steal money from the public as a condition of engaging in their constitutional rights, freedom of speech. The fine arts represent the soul of America. And sadly, I fear that now, along with the downfall of the fine arts, the soul of America is also dying. On a lighter note, Mayor, I have something here for you, something to put a smile on your face for years to come.
Uh oh.
Something I know that you will always remember me for, but it comes with a little metaphor that every government official should take, keep in mind and take to heart.
It's the bunnies.
Considering the best laid plans of mice and men, don't forget the bunnies. Don't forget all those who don't have a voice. Don't forget all those who are fearful of speaking out. And most of all, don't forget all the beautiful living creatures that share this planet with us. Thank you for your time. This is for you, Mayor.
And for those of you that don't know, Mr. White, yes, please, Mr. White is a massive champion for the arts and freedom of speech. And we did a lot of great work together when I very first was elected. Remember, I had no idea what I was doing? Thank you, my friend, and thank you for your service to this country. We're, we're very fortunate to have you.
Sam Gettle, followed by Mac Rossi, followed by Craig Bronson.
Hello, Sam.
Hi, welcome aboard all new people. I just wanted to bring to your attention an issue. I'm, I'm in the property business and I represent about 30 people and families that are affected and, and I'm sorry to bring it down to garbage after all these wonderful things.
That's what we're here for.
But I have through Reno Direct, an S, a service report, 0060041, and I was, um, reminded to come speak before you guys, because this is a very unique forum and it's wonderful. Coming from the Bay Area 30 years ago to be able to speak to you. And so what, what's basically happened, the complaint is that there's continuous garbage, is mattresses, and so Reno has a problem with small apartment buildings that are, have no management or poor management and the owners are out of state, usually the Bay Area or Los Angeles. So this, this is that situation.
Yeah.
This is not old cream reality, which you guys thankfully, that was all working beautifully and thanks Naomi. This is, this is in Ward Three. So what's happening is it boils down to, to, to two issues because it used to affect the old cream reality. The garbage cans, if, if code enforcement and the people that will, that work in that department will enforce two issues. One of them is the cans have to have the lids closed and a lot of these owners are cheap and will not provide enough cans. So the lids are open constantly. I'm downwind, all of our property, we have to pick it up constantly. The second thing is they allow too many cars parking on the site, so they push the cans out into the alley, which is a public rideaway. If they will just focus on those two issues, it will go away. And as you all know, the midtown is more dense than it used to be. And these small things make a huge difference because no one sweeps the leaves, no one cleans the gutters because there's too many parked cars. And if we can get the trash issue, it would be wonderful. So yesterday when I went up, I wanted to shout out, the front desk staff is wonderful on the, on the second floor, they're wonderful. But they didn't have an answer to why, when I filed this in August, there's been no answer. So when the very nice gentleman at the front desk, he went back to the mysterious decision maker and the answer that came back was just keep making more complaints and we will eventually get around to it. I don't think that's a very good way to handle one's time and one's resources and I wanted to let all of you know.
Yeah, thank you. I agree with that and we will have.
It's simple.
We're going to have, um, Ashley Turney address that. She is head of code.
Okay.
And she will have an answer for you.
Okay.
And if it's something we need to bring back to council on how many trashcans or lids or whatever, we want to hear about it. But Ms. Turney is right there and she's going to give you an answer. Thank you.
Mac Rossi, followed by Craig Bronson, followed by the Nevada Peer Support Network.
Mr. Rossi.
You can call me Mac. Nobody important here.
I know, Mac, but.
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Mac Rossi and I am honored to be a part of the City Parks Commission for several years. We are so lucky to have a river coming right through our city. It really is an honor compared to other cities. Uh, if you go up a little bit upstream, you'll have somebody enjoying fishing. You start to come down the, the river, you see folks that are residents that sit right on the banks of the river that have the honor of stepping out on their patio and enjoying the view. Come a little farther down, you see people walking and jogging on our river and enjoying sights. You go a little further down and you have an event center where you can have music right on the river and enjoy that. Next to that, you'll see children splashing in the water, in the cool water in the summer days and enjoying that part of the river. If you're down there during the three-day event where they have kayaks competing and enjoying that for a three-day event adventure. You also see residents, excuse me, restaurants on the river that are enjoying vegetables, drinks and dinner and watching the river. If you have the honor for a one-day event to go ahead and see about a thousand little plastic yellow ducks floating down for profits of a nonprofit organization, which is really neat. You have an item D6 on the agenda today, requesting installing lights on the river pathway for further safety and enjoyment of all the residents. I am asking you to improve that project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mac. Great job.
Craig Bronson, followed by the Nevada Peer Support Network, followed by Ian Anderson.
Good morning, Arnold Ramirez, members of City Council and staff. My name is Craig Bronson. In addition to being a citizen, it's always great to follow Mac. I'm also on the Parks Recreation Commission. And so I can make this brief, ditto to everything that Mac said. Uh, he's usually right on spot. The one thing I want to add to that is I've, I'm a park recreation professional over 50 years working in the industry and I appreciate the fact that I get to serve on your commission. Whether it's a park, whether it's a path, whether it's a facility, one of the most important things to activate them and get our community involved is their belief of safety. And safety is their reality and many times not based in fact. One of the things on D6 I want to add your support is adding light in the evenings is one of the ways to activate it because if people feel safe because they can see and be seen, they'll be more active, especially in our summer months. And so I can give you a prime example. We got a lot of money from a developer one time to put a pathway under a road. The problem was the pathway was so large, so long that from one end to the other, you couldn't see through it. So even though it was the safest way for our people to travel, they would cross the road rather than go into an area that they couldn't see to the other side. So anything we can do to make our facilities safer, I hope you will support D6 and pass that action item. Thank you.
Wow, thank you so much. You could not be more spot on. Were you at another city before? I can tell you have experience in this realm.
I was 36 years full-time in California and I spent the last 10 years as a consultant helping park and recreation agencies be more effective and efficient.
I love that and thank you. It means a lot when you come and you either are for an item or against an item because it helps the council know what our community wants to see. But it, it is very, very helpful and your points are so well taken about safety.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Mac. I think you two get in trouble together. I can tell.
Nevada Peer Support Network, followed by Ian Anderson, followed by.
Good morning. We're excited that you're here. We're excited.
So are we. We always are. Anyway, uh, we are five of the 30 retirees, uh, retired first responders who operate the Nevada Peer Support Network, uh, along with, uh, two of our therapists who work out of our Resiliency Center who take care of, uh, first responders with PTSD.
Yeah.
And, and other, uh, mental health issues. Uh, first of all, congratulations for, for your election and reelection. And, uh, thank you all, uh, of you who actually offered to help us with some discretionary funds once, uh, once you, uh, the, the election was over. So I just want to throw that out there. Just, that was Mayor Shivi's idea. Just make sure you're reminded of that. So, uh, anyway, uh, the Nevada Peer Support Network, our incident support service, uh, responds when requested to fires and special events and some law enforcement incidents that are long-term. Uh, over the last, uh, year, we responded to about 30 incidents, uh, including the Gold Ranch Fire, the Davis Fire for four days and recently the, uh, Callahan Ranch Fire to serve food, beverages and things like that and provide heated shelter for our, um, brother and sister firefighters. So we've asked the city through Mayor Shivi to help us, uh, develop some mental health programs, particularly for substance abuse. And, um, it was suggested that we could possibly, uh, get some funding through the opiate settlement. And, uh, we currently, along with our, the therapists that are work, working with us, coming up with some, some great plans to reach out to various first responder agencies uh, to come up with, um, some ideas to, um, actually fulfill the, the requirements if we were able to get that money. And, um, we are very, uh, excited. We do right now have AA for first responders two days a week, uh, that, that is very popular. And unfortunately, it, it's also necessary. Um, we want to reach out to a bunch of different agencies to be able to enhance our, uh, ability to take care of our, our brother and sister first responders at our resiliency center. And, uh, we're picking up quite a few ideas as we speak. Um, finally, uh, we're, uh, I will be sending some requests to you. Um, on another note, um, we, we get, it's exhausting trying to constantly ask for funding. And, um, it would be great for us to be able to have a budgeted item since we take care of fire, EMS, law enforcement, our dispatchers.
And military.
And, and some of the, uh, our veterans in, in through our center and the services we provide. And, um, our budget is basically $45,000 a year for our resiliency center and our incident support. We, we have, uh, two vehicles and Trucking Metals Fire is giving us another vehicle, uh, to respond to calls. Um, and we felt that the three government organizations, the county, Sparks and, uh, City of Reno, if we were to get $15,000 a year in the budget, that would cover all of our expenses and then any donations could expand our services. So, um, I, I sent a letter to, uh, Mayor Shivi and hopefully we can get that done, uh, maybe in the next year's budget. Anyway, thank you. Um, any questions you might have with us, um, you know, uh, we're here to answer and we're available at any time, 24/7 when we get paged out.
Yeah, thank you for what you do and none of you get paid. And the reason why I think this is so important is that, you know, our first responders are out there fighting fires, crime, whatever that looks like on our behalf. But then I think a lot of people forget, when that incident is over, oftentimes their mental health could be in grave danger. And then we start to see things like addiction, PTSD, those types of situations. And so I'm grateful for your program because that's helping combat a lot of the issues that we see with our first responders. Many of them have very high rates of suicide too. And we forget that they see unbelievable trauma every single day. So we are very grateful for what you do, day in and day out. Um, I'm excited for this opioid settlement money. I want to say thank you to JW Hives, that's under his, his department. So, um, very grateful that we could help you with this because I think that this is a start to sort of a longer impact of a program that's going to be very beneficial. So thank you. Thank you for recognizing mental health and addiction. It's so important.
Yes, um, we, we try our, our best. We try every day to, to make our organization stronger. And from direct services, simply bringing, uh, all in the toilet to a fire scene where the people are going to be there for hours and hours to, um, mental health and, and getting people back on their feet again and back to work, uh, and keeping their families happy once again, uh, is kind of the, it's a broad reach and spectrum that we, we have, but we, uh, we try our best and, but we need your help.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thanks, Jay.
Ian Anderson, followed by Britton Griffiths.
Uh, good morning. Thank you for the time today. My name is Ian Anderson and I'm on the Parks and Rec Commission with Craig and with Mac. Uh, I'm here to support also in, uh, speaking support of item D9, D6, which is the lighting of the Trucking River Path. Um, I spend a lot of time on the Trucking River. I do street. I do street outreach with the Karma Box Project and I'm in the city parks and on the river quite a bit in that capacity. This lighting is going to make that path a safer place and more welcoming to both visitors and residents of this community. And it's very consistent with the recent investment that you all have done in the Truckee River by extending the park boundaries, the investment in the River Ranger program, and also the investment in the outreach teams with Rise and Karma Box Project. As you know, I've heard you all say this, the Truckee is one of the great resources we have in this community and the ability to make it more accessible for visitors and for residents. I think it is an essential part of the quality of life in Reno. So thank you very much. I hope that you will support this item D six today. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. It's so nice to see all of you from the Parks Commission. It really is. Thank you for your service.
Britten Griffiths?
Good morning, Britten.
Good morning. Am I working? I'm loud enough anyways. Good morning. For the record, my name is Britten Griffiths. I am here today on behalf of the Riverwalk District. I just want to say thank you. We were on the consent agenda item earlier that's going to allow us to have more events and include more folks in our permitting processing. And I just want to say a huge thank you to your staff. There are a lot of kitchens, or people that get in the kitchens for you all. And so we're just really appreciative that you guys keep coming and you help us. You get all of our events done. The main thing that we just wanted to say thank you to for as well was not the consent item today, but we were allowed to bring Halloween Howl back today. Thanks to the events team that helped us with sponsorships to get Brick Park open. For those of you that aren't familiar, it brings young kids down. And we also had a doggy contest this time that raised money for a option vet clinic. So it's things like that that allow us to grow and bring community members to share downtown and to remind them that it's there downtown, just as much as sometimes the perception is that it belongs to other folks. So it's for all of us in the city and we want to remind people that it's for their families as well. So with that, thank you. I hope you have a wonderful holiday season. We will not be hosting any events. We'll just be coming down to the tree lighting. And we're just so excited to have you guys all within our district and congratulations to each of you on your races. And I'm sure you got to sleep a lot better last weekend, the last couple of weeks. So on behalf of the Riverwalk District, thank you so much and we will see you in 2025.
Britten, nice, nice job and thank you for the recognition on that. And I just want to remind people, there are a lot of children that live in our downtown.
Huge amount of kiddos and they love it. They like to come down and they like to see the river. I mean, plus D six, I am in support of D six. Thank you. We will take a ride along the river anytime. But yeah, we have a lot of children that are residents of downtown and also their grandparents that live here, aunts and uncles. So they do like to come down and enjoy the different decorations and things like that, particularly for Christmas.
Thank you.
So we appreciate that you allow us to do that. Especially thanks also to Downtown Marine Partnership because they helped us with ambassadors so that people felt more safe and we did it in the daytime as well. So it was really nice to activate that plaza and see it activated with little guys running around in full T-Rex dance party. So thank you for that and your support for everything else.
And I think you were a princess.
I was. One time I went as a villain and it did not go well for the little guys. So.
There was some kid, he even said he was a serial killer. He had cereal all over his.
So it's cute. We get thousands of kids and a lot of dogs. So it's reminding us that there is a lot of fun that's still happening downtown, even though we work really hard. Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, Madam Mayor, with that, we have no additional public comment. For the record, we did receive four comments, general in nature, not directly associated with an agenda item prior to 4:00 PM yesterday, November 19th. And those have been distributed to the Reno City Council and they were four letters of concern. With that, we have no additional public comment. We're moving on to item A four, approval of the agenda. Oh, I'm sorry. We did have one more speaker. Mark.
Saving the best for last, is that?
I am. Sorry about that.
Something like that. For the record, my name is Mark Cameron. I'm the Executive Director of the Tahoe Pyramid Trail, Sparks resident for 20 years. Donald. First, I wanted to kind of say, I never know what I'm going to see or hear when I come to these meetings. And I want to thank you for bringing UNR Honors College here. My daughter was in the Honors College and I never knew what it was all about until that is now.
You were just paying for it. You just didn't know what it was about.
And, and you know, it does work because she's actually in her last year finishing up her, on a full scholarship, finishing up her chemistry PhD at Vanderbilt.
Oh, my goodness.
The Honors College works.
I love that.
Yep. So I, I'm here to speak on, in support of D six on behalf of myself and the Board of Directors from the Tahoe Pyramid Trail. We are really excited to have this lighting project going into play, you know, being potentially voted on and approved today. You know, one of the chief concerns that the Tahoe Pyramid Trail receives each year from our, our trail users that are, that are active on the website, they tend to write in and voice safety concerns with the part of the, the trail that runs through the downtown area. So I think this is going to go a long way to help support that and show them that their, that their concerns are being met. I'm really excited about it. I've been a regular user of the trail myself since I moved here in 2005. I use it as a commuting trail. I'm still using it today to go to and from meetings and things. I estimate that I've ridden about 20,000 miles on that section of the trail over 20 years. Yeah. So I just wanted to offer our support for that. I think the lighting will be a great step in improving the safety. And then one other thing I want to make sure that the council and the Parks Department thinks about in the future, as you're, as you're, you know, approving these things through the Truckee River Vision Plan in the future, which I hope there are, there are more things to come out of that. But it's one thing to get the work done, but then it has to be maintained, which takes man-hours and it takes additional funding. So as we add these improvements, just know that that will increase, increase the need for maintenance into the future. So I just ask that you would consider that as well.
I love that. And if you could do me a favor, I'd love for you to come to RTC and give some public comment about how you use it as a commuter. We need to invest a lot more and the board currently is really pushing for that. And I just think it would be very worthwhile for us to work together with RTC. But if that's what the commissioners want to see.
Yeah, most recently I did, I did speak to RTC about a feasibility plan that we're doing with the end dot right now. That's going to be between Fernley and East Sparks for the same reason, to make it a commuter trail.
I love that. But let us know how we can help up there. Because we have a lot of work we can do with you. Thanks.
Madam Mayor, with that, we have no additional public comments. Moving on to item A four, approval of the agenda.
All right, thank you. May I get a motion for approval? So moved. I have a motion. I have a second.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, go right back, right back at you.
I think City Manager Bryant has announcements before we make an approval.
Sorry. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So there are no changes or additions to the agenda, but we do have some things out of order. Following consent, we will go right to item D five, RPD Flock Safety Item. After that, we'll, lunch, we'll have an attorney-client meeting during that time. Then we will hear item D seven, which is our guest presentation from Julia Raddi with Wausau County. Following that, items D one and two related to Market Street and the Jacob's Globe Plaza. Then the RDA, item D three. Then we're going to move, let's see, C one and C two on the RDA items. And after that, we'll be back to our agenda with items D four, E one, two and four. And then we'll wrap up with item D six. It's a little out of order today.
Okay, then I would just ask Madam Clerk, I tend to be looking at my agenda, so you might just have to stop me.
No problem. Thank you.
On track. Thank you. Appreciate it very much. Okay. That being said, I have a motion. I have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
The only thing is, on our record here, it said it was moved by Devon, second by me, but I think it was reversed.
You.
I motioned, but it says, there it is. He just fixed it.
Madam Clerk, she just updated it. Yeah, okay. Thank you. All right, back at you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We can now take a motion on our consent agenda items as nothing was pulled.
Move to approve.
I have a motion. I have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. We're going to head into item D five. Madam Clerk, do you have any public comment on item D five?
Madam Mayor, we do not have any public, public comment on item D five. Thank you for asking.
Okay. All right, we're going to have a presentation from Chief Nance.
Hello, everybody.
Thank you.
Sorry, allergies are terrible, so I'm going to cough. I'm going to tell you that right now. I'm going to try and avoid it. We'll see what we do. So Chief Nance, for the record, want to start off with the Flock Safety Presentation. Just some information, this agenda item is, if I can move forward, there we go. Strategic Plan Alignment is with Public Safety. And I want to be clear, this is in addition to the public safety efforts that we're already putting forward in the rest of the city of Reno, but particularly in the downtown area. And it's really going to help us continue to do enforcement strategies and really direct our officers into a space where they need to be. And this is one of those ideas of intelligence-led policing that shows us where we need to go. So just some fun facts for right now. Our walking team and our bike team in the last 60 days have made 165 arrests in the downtown area. 53 of those were felony arrests and numerous citations, 204 citations also. Council meeting a few, a month or two ago, we talked about the whips. It was kind of new to us. It wasn't actively being reported. But since that time, they were able to make 13 whip arrests. So really make a dent on that. We have not had a complaint about it, knock on wood, for a little while. So that's really good. So that's the, that's the downtown walking team that you're seeing. And also our bike team are making these really strong progress in this area. And this is just another way that we're going to help enhance their ability to respond to calls and to be even more effective. So we're talking about the Flock Safety Gunshot Detection System, 90% detection accuracy, and it can get us where that gunshot happened within 90 feet. So really narrows down exactly where the officer should respond to, either look for shell casings if it's already happened and they're not going, the people aren't going to be there anymore, or respond rapidly to where a gun violence act might have happened. This is just a discharge of a firearm or a shooting, any one of those could be. From the time the shots are fired until the alert, it is less than 60 seconds. And we find in a lot of communities that have a lot of noise, that are in business areas, when a gunshot is heard, a lot of people don't call and report it. It's a little bit different than in some other neighborhoods. And so we're really looking at 30% more gunshots that we're going to hear in the downtown. We don't know what we're missing, but this really does give us an opportunity to respond to those very quickly and know where the problems are happening. And again, it's really important to understand that the evidence value of discharged firearms with shell casings allows us to do other follow-up and link cases that we might not even know are out there if we don't have this type of, of this type of infrastructure that we need. The gunshot detection system is going to cover one square mile of downtown. We'll work with the vendor and our data informants to say where exactly this is going to go and make sure that we have the right space. It accurately distinguishes between gunshots, fireworks, street, street takeovers and other sounds. So if we do have an intersection that is having like a sideshow type thing or a street takeover, this is a system that will also alert us that that type of activity is happening so we can respond quicker than somebody calling 911 or maybe the phone tree. Or as we've heard from some people, they're not sure who to call and maybe they report it to Reno Direct and we don't get that information for a couple of days. This also records a five-second audio clip and it immediately alerts dispatch and select units. So those downtown walking teams and our bike teams, they can have this alerted right directly to their phone. They'll get a notification and they'll be able to respond even maybe before that call is dispatched out over the radio. So we can determine who needs to have that information. This package also comes with Flock Safety Surveillance System. This is a full deployment system. They do the installation, maintenance, power and internet. It's infrastructure-free. They handle everything, 24/7 data coverage. So we get all of the cameras and everything else. We get that information rolling in real time and they can do real-time alerts. So if we have a car that's wanted, a missing person, we can put those alerts into the system and we will get those alert backs almost immediately before needing, we need somebody to call in and say, hey, I saw this car here or there. This alert system will come directly to us. This, this surveillance system gathers objects, evidence and facts. So we look at what we're getting from it. We're able to pull it back. We can alert police of wanted vehicles, like I said, and we're going to do over 40 cameras. 31 will be downtown and 10 will be along major thoroughfares coming into the city so that we're able to capture people that are moving about and where they're at. This, all these things go right back into that real-time information center. We're really moving forward in our technology to help, as a force multiplier, to make sure that our officers have every piece of technology that they need to help them deploy in a smarter way than we have before. Before we go, well, maybe this neighborhood's a problem, so we'll go over there. This type of information allows us to say, this is where the problem is happening. This particular intersection, this particular street, this neighborhood, whatever it is, really leads us into how we respond and deploy our resources into different areas. We partner with Sparks PD for the Real-Time Information Center. We're rolling that up. It's a great program. This is another piece of it. We're working on data sharing with our neighboring agencies so that we all have similar systems that speak to each other. So we all have access to each other's cameras. We all have access to the information obtained in there and we're able to move forward with that very fast. We are able to develop suspect leads with built-in software. If we are looking for a specific vehicle, we can put that information in and it will track on the cameras where that vehicle has been. So we have a better chance of finding a license plate or identifying where maybe that vehicle lives or stays. And then just keep in mind that with the system that Flock Safety handles all the installation and maintenance. So once the system's purchased, it becomes their responsibility to make sure those cameras are up and maintained. We do find that cameras are hard. They, they go down for weather or different reasons or they need to be updated. With this, we're going to get the most accurate and up-to-date information. It, it's another space that we need to be in to make sure that where we are is we are accurately deploying our residents, our officers throughout our communities that we need. This system also allows us, there are some things that it does that are a little bit nuanced and different that are really fun. We can use data trailers. So if we're having a problem in a specific area, we can put that there. If we determine that the downtown isn't a good place for it, we don't know what we don't know. We're pretty sure that we're accurate in where it should go right now, but we can always move it to another neighborhood that has a different problem. So it really is a citywide, depending on where it is. But we really feel that piloting this in the downtown, understanding what our problems are and having a better grasp of it will help. I really wish we would have had this technology a month or so ago when we were working on a couple of the problem bars that were having a lot of issues, street takeover shootings. This would have been a much faster alert system for us and it probably would have helped in determining that that was a particular problem before it got to the place where people were fed up and calling the police. This allows us to identify these problems a little sooner. And with that, I can answer any questions and this is the recommended motion to approve the funds.
Really appreciate the update. I'm excited actually for this technology. I was misled. I thought that we had it a long time ago. And I want to be able to give you every possible tool that you and the department need. We want to support you in every way. You know, we are not law enforcement agents. This is why we have a police chief. We leave it to your purview to enforce the law. And we appreciate what you do day in, day out. I know it's a really difficult job, but we want to support you in particularly the downtown efforts, anything we possibly can do. I really appreciate the statistics on the arrests. I think those are very helpful. So I'd like to make sure that we include those in the downtown update so that we know that we're making an impact because we also have to send a strong message. We will not tolerate it here. So I appreciate it, but I, I think this is going to make a huge difference. Do you believe that?
Absolutely. This is an amazing technology. There's, this technology has been around for a long time. I operated with it in Stockton. We had it in one particular neighborhood where we had a lot of shootings and gunshots and it was very effective, especially in linking gun crimes and finding those shell casings so that we were able to determine where problems were happening that we were missing because people just, sometimes they just don't call or they're not even sure that they heard gunshots or they're sleeping and they, they wake up and they're like, I think those were gunshots, but they never call and report it. We are able to respond and get that data and that information. And I appreciate the comment about how hard these officers are working. We're seeing numbers of arrests and contacts in the downtown area that we've never seen before. So when we look back historically, a lot more is being done there and a lot more of the actual arrests of felonies, of arrests of people with warrants and then the citations for things that people cannot go to jail for. So while there might be a public perception that those things aren't happening, they are. And I do look forward to presenting more information and facts to you about how hard these officers are working in that area and the actual arrests that they're making in there and the violent crimes that they're preventing by their firearms that they're taking off the street. And I think I come back in like maybe the next council meeting to do a little more. So you'll get, that was just my little snippet of info. You're going to get a little more on what they're doing then also.
Okay, that's fantastic. And you also stated at our, every month I have a press conference for public safety. And at that briefing, you also stated that homicides were actually down. And I think sometimes, you know, there's a saying in the, in the press that if it bleeds, it leads. It's a really horrible thing to say, but that's sort of like, it, it just gets a lot of attention. And so I also want to highlight the work that you do so that people do recognize, you know, the day in and day out that we might not talk about. And the ways that you actually also divert tragedies that we don't even mention.
Yeah, our shooting-related incidents are down right now. And so it's important to note that, that injury shootings and shooting-related incidents are actually down. It's a dangerous time. We've had a lot of homicides that are domestic-related or roommates or things that are odd to prevent. But our gun-related, gang-related type of homicides have seen a decline. And overall, our shooting incidents have declined from. But our gun-related, um, gang-related type of homicides have seen a decline and overall our shooting incidents have declined from year over year, which is very important to know.
All right. Thank you. I'm going to head down to Vice Mayor. Go ahead, Taylor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Chief. Um, one question for you. What is the city's obligation financially moving forward with this?
So right now it's the ARPA funds of the four hundred and fifty thousand dollars that should put us in a three-year contract. And then after that, we'll be able to, to renew that contract or determine what it is.
Would it be four hundred and fifty thousand dollars every three years or is part of it the maintenance setup?
Uh, part of it's a maintenance and setup.
Okay, thank you.
And so that, that total will determine later on when we get through that contract.
Councilmember Martinez.
Thanks so much, Madam Mayor. Just thank you for all the work and making sure that we're making informed decisions and using evidence and facts. I appreciate you sharing that. We have the ability to kind of move depending on what is happening and using evidence to try to be preventive, um, or being effective in the search process and getting as much evidence as you can. So, thanks for highlighting those two things because those are the questions that I had. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
All right, Councilwoman Anderson? No? All right, Councilman Reese.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, Chief Vance, thank you for the presentation. A couple of things. One is I, uh, believed in my heart of hearts that we already had ShotSpotter, the city of Reno. And so I was a little surprised that we're only now getting this one. I know our sister city in the city of Sparks, thanks to Councilman Abbott and our friends across the way have had ShotSpotter now for several years. I think the university also has it. I know it's a different variation of the, the thing. I'm using that as a generic term for the type of surveillance technology. But I, can you sort of, A, speak to that? My, my, why do I believe or why did I wrongfully believe that we already had this technology?
So, um, I, I can maybe baby speak to it, but I wasn't here, I think, when that decision was made not to have it. And I don't know the exact reasons. But I think when we moved into the bigger, uh, program with Axon and FUSIS, there was a talk about putting this in there and then it did not make it. Now, for what reasons, I'm not sure exactly. Um, but I believe that that's kind of when it came about. The other thing that, that we might have heard is with where Sparks's, um, ShotSpotter technology, and they use a different system. They both can talk to each other. They're just, uh, they're, they're different vendors. And as we're working into this real-time information center, we're actually trying out a lot of different vendors to see, we have the opportunity while we're partnering with them, to determine which ones are better and which ones are most cost-effective and what we like working with and melds better. So that later on, as we move forward, when these things, um, become expired, we can just say, well, we would prefer this one or this one. So we can work into that plan, um, jointly. Uh, but it's really not a hindrance at all that they're different. But their, where their, um, ShotSpotter system is located, it's actually located in a place where it does pick up some city of Reno gun incidents. So we do have some cases that are within the city limits of Reno that are picked up on the ShotSpotter from Sparks. So like when our regional gang units are working together or our rope detectives, we do respond out there and we have had some successes for things that were picked up in Reno. But we do not actually have this technology. Uh, it's a great technology. It's very useful. Uh, the, the biggest limitation to this is the cost based on your square mileage. So it's one square mile for the amount we're getting. We have to understand that that's, you know, one square mile. So as you, if you wanted to do the whole city of Reno, that would probably, one, be not very effective and two, um, would you have a very large cost associated. So that is the only real drawback with it. And I don't know what I did.
No problem. I don't need it, Chief. Um, but, um, Madam Mayor had asked about a statistic and perhaps jumping the gun literally about, um, your presentation next month. But I get the sense that because of late, we've had, unfortunately, we had a, a shooting at one of the midtown bars. We had a shooting in Northwest Reno. We had a stabbing in our city hall plaza. The loss of life is of course always tragic. And so, um, I am most interested in knowing, uh, from your intelligence-based policing model, where we are maybe year over year comparison. So when you come back, that is something that I'm going to be asking about because, um, I think Madam Mayor has been consistent over time. And I think this body has always been consistent over time that a safe city is a thriving city, is a prosperous city. We need our public to understand that we will commit whatever resources, whatever technology, whatever buildings are necessary to ensure their safety. And that means that we have consistently, um, had academies. We've tried to, uh, fill the vacancies as quickly as the, uh, retirements have happened. We are trying to grow our police department. And so I'm interested in those numbers when you come back.
Absolutely. We have eighteen graduated from the academy in just the next few weeks. Super exciting. And, you know, get them into training and through that process and, um, you know, it, it really has, but we've been able to fill academies and our recruiting has been great. So, um, it, it's, it's a process and it's going to take us a while to catch up from where the hindrances were in, in that space and where we were, were at much lower vacancies we, than we were than when I started. So our hiring has done great things. And, um, you know, we're really getting to the point where we're filling academy based on just that attrition and we're not lagging behind anymore. So yeah, we can include all that into the presentation. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Um, hi, thank you. Um, I was wondering, the, what is the difference between this unit, one of the thirty-one units downtown? Um, and like a regular camera besides the audio capability? I guess I'm wondering about, is the camera bigger, better, higher resolution?
Yes. So the, there are two different systems. One is the gunshot detection system, which is like a speaker audio system. And then the other one is the camera system. They don't, their, their work, it can joint, they, they, they match the data together, but they're two different things. So, so one, we have the gunshot detection and then we have cameras. The cameras are, um, very high resolution. They are able to, um, determine license plates and types of cars. The other thing that you can do with those cameras is you can put things in there like white truck with a red bumper sticker and it can use it to tell you to find that in, if it's come through that camera system and then locate it.
So my question is also, are they movable or once installed, they have to live in that spot or?
They're all movable.
Okay. So my question is, uh, taking all this to the next level, when you said, I wish we had it before.
Yeah.
Um, I wish we had it before too in a couple of places. One was the Rio Wrangler Gate, which was constantly being burglarized.
So this would not probably be the cameras you would want there. This would be a different type of camera, most likely.
Be- because?
Well, you were, you would put this camera maybe.
We, we don't have that problem. I'm going to a different problem.
If we, it like on that gate, we would maybe put it, this would be something that would catch license plates, but it's not a surveillance camera in the same way. So we would maybe use a different type of camera there.
Okay.
But it, yes, those types of things.
Well, I don't know. Um, so, uh, there's a development above, uh, rain, um, sorry, Damone Ranch High School. It's near the D.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, it's called Palisades. And I've been getting, I'm going to be sending you an email, but I've been getting a lot of complaints down there about a lot of vandalism that's continuing.
Okay.
Continuing, continuing to neighbors' cars, doors, homes, property by, it seems like a group of, we'll just say youth. I don't know if they're actually in high school, college or something else, by younger people. Uh, the residents have been taken into their own hands, it seems like. But what I was wondering is, would a camera like this or a different one be helpful in identifying the cars, that, the people that are participating, that kind of thing?
So these cameras specific are going to be more geared towards using them with the gunshot detection as that force multiplier. So we have both of them. So that's what we're utilizing this mostly for. Um, yes, sometimes cameras can be very helpful. We encourage people that live in those neighborhoods and businesses in those neighborhoods and the camera systems that they have to join in the FUSIS program. So we have access to their data.
That's great.
So, um, if they were to join in FUSIS, they can give us access to, uh, external cameras or certain cameras. And when we get reports of incidents or calls come in, we can real-time see where the, what's going on in that neighborhood. Or we can go back and pull the data later for crimes that might have happened. So we do encourage that.
Well, the last part of this was that, just on the appropriation, was this an initial appropriation or are we re-appropriating some other ARPA money?
We are re-appropriating other ARPA money.
Do you know what that's?
Um, I think it is in the staff report.
Maybe our city manager knows?
Thank you. Yes, uh, this is a reappropriation of funding that was previously allocated for the Pembroke Flatfield.
Oh, okay. And whenever we do those, it would be helpful just for us to include that in the presentation. So we can just follow the bouncing ball, especially here after the year. That'd be helpful. All right. Thank you. Looking forward to your next presentation too.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Please.
Move to approve.
I have a motion.
Second.
I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice job.
Okay. Um, City Manager Bryant has alerted me that we need to get into lunch for attorney-client.
That is correct, Mayor.
Okay. So let's let the public know, Madam Clerk, when we will be back.
An hour and a half?
Twelve-thirty.
Perfect, twelve-thirty.
Well, and I think they added something to the lunch addition to that. Does that include that time?
Do you want to?
The tour upstairs.
Yeah. Twelve-thirty. How about one o'clock?
We'll reconvene at one o'clock.
Right, because there's also something on here that is a time certain. I believe there's a presentation, so let's come back at one.
Great, thank you.
What is?
Thank you. Do you know what that is?
Julia Ratty.
Oh, it's. Clerk, thank you so much. We're back.
Just for the record, Madam Mayor, we're reconvening at one oh eight and Councilmember Ebert is absent.
Okay. I was trying to wait for her, but I don't think she's coming back. I think she's at her, um, cooking class. Okay, thank you.
And we're on item, I'm sorry. D five, oh, I'm sorry, D seven, mental health presentation.
Hey, I am super excited. We have two very special guests with us this afternoon. The one and only Julia Ratty. Um, she is no stranger to obviously, uh, government process building. She was also, you were a senator.
Briefly.
And, and Councilwoman, but now she is a major, major champion, uh, for mental health over at the county. What? I call you the director of awesome, awesomeness, but what, what, what's your title?
Behavioral Health Administrator.
Okay. Well, anyway, it's amazing. We also have Steve Shell, um, who I am super excited to have here because we've all worked very closely in some capacity on mental health. And so Julia, the floor is yours. Hold on, let me ask one question. Uh, Madam Clerk, do you have any public comment on this item?
We do not have any public comment on this item.
Okay. All right. Well, go ahead, Julia. The floor is yours.
Great. Well, thank you, everybody. My name is, again, for the record, Julia Ratty. I am the Behavioral Health Administrator for Washoe County. It is good to see you all and thank you for the invitation. Um, I just want to start with a little bit of background. Um, in October of last year, the Washoe County Commission identified behavioral health as one of the top strategic priorities for the commission. And as part of that, they created a new position in the Office of the County Manager, which is this Behavioral Health Administrator position. I want to be very clear here that I am not a clinician. And so if you have clinical questions, I am not, I am not your gal. Uh, this role, please hold those for someone else. Um, this role is really, was intended to work at a policy and systems level. And the emphasis is on behavioral health initiatives that have regional significance, which is what brings me here to talk to you today. Almost everything that I'm working on cannot be accomplished by the county alone. It requires the partnership of all the local jurisdictions, the state, our private partners in the healthcare system. And so, um, what I'm here to do today is to tell you about the four significant regional behavioral health initiatives that have been identified for the first year or two of work. And then as part of that, I'm going to invite Steve Shell up to, um, share the, the good news about one aspect of that work that we've been working on for quite some time. So I'm going to stay at a very high level. I'm going to move very quickly. There's a lot of detail behind all four of these initiatives, but I would be happy to answer questions. Yeah.
I just have one question to begin. I just want to make sure. You have left, um, District Health some time ago, right?
Correct.
To take on this role.
Correct.
Like a year ago, you just said.
Uh, officially started in the position on April first. However, with Kevin Dick's departure, there was an extended transition. So I say I really got my hands on this role July one.
July one. All right. That's all I want. Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. So then I will go ahead and jump right in. Um, so the first, uh, piece that I would like to talk to you about is the crisis response system. This is something that we've been working on as a region for quite some time now. The crisis response system in our current world, right? If somebody is having a behavioral health crisis, they're going to call nine-one-one. When they get that nine-one-one operator, the nine-one-one operator is going to say something along the lines of, is this police, health or fire? And we're going to roll the appropriate response, which will generally not be a behavioral health response. Um, if things go badly, that person is either going to end up in an emergency room or if the behaviors warranted, they may end up in jail. This is not a good behavioral health response. And so the behavioral health crisis response system is work that's been going across the nation to build an alternative behavioral health response for somebody who is experiencing a behavioral health crisis. So when we talk about that, in our region, we've been working in coalition since about twenty-twenty-one. We have two coalitions that are working, um, together on this. One is called the Partner Agency Team. They meet monthly. It's mostly the providers who will, who either are now or will be in the future, providing behavioral health crisis services. And then the second one is a children's crisis collaboration that is specifically working on the needs of children and families who are exposed, experiencing a behavioral health crisis. Because, because in some instances, they need a very different response than an adult would. So two coalitions, one has been meeting since twenty-twenty-one, the other one's been meeting since twenty-twenty, late twenty-twenty-two. They both meet monthly and anything that I talk about today, I'm talking about our work, not my work. So let's talk about the as- aspects of the crisis response system. The first aspect is someone to call, someone to talk to, right? And in July of twenty-twenty-two, nationally, we had the nine-eight-eight phone number go live. In our community, Crisis Support Services of Nevada, a small but mighty nonprofit, has been running the lifeline for decades, literally. Um, and they now take the nine-eight-eight calls and they can do call, text and chat for somebody who's in a behavioral health crisis. So that's the first step of diverting folks out of the EMS system is if we can start to work with folks to call nine-eight-eight instead of calling nine-one-one if what they need is support on a behavioral health crisis. In the twenty-twenty-one legislative session and then with some cleanup that we needed to do in twenty-twenty-three, there was a fee put on everybody's phone lines. It's thirty-five cents a month. Um, and that allows us to collect about fifteen million dollars a year. That fifteen million dollars a year is primarily designated to, designated to upgrade the crisis hub. Um, Mayor Sheevy and I had the opportunity with several others to visit Phoenix, Arizona, Maricopa County to see their work. And this is really then now adding the high-tech part of a high-touch call center hub. When it is fully built out, it will have functionality like better data collection so that we can know the outcomes of what happens for people who are experiencing a crisis. Dispatching capabilities so that they can dispatch mobile crisis teams and a bed registry so they will know when, um, where, where and when a bed is open. So great news that that money has been now collected for a year and the state of Nevada, because this is a statewide system, put out a request for proposal for an administrative services organization that will have the technological capacity, administrative capacity to take our nine-eight-eight system and kick it up to the next level. So that, um, can't tell you much more detail about that because we're still in the dark period where it's negotiations between the state and the vendor. But my understanding is it will be approved at the next Board of Examiners meeting. After that, that team will be on the ground. It's a, it's a, uh, national organization who has done this work in other states. A big deal in the nine-eight-eight space is that when nine-eight-eight first became live, there was no geo-routeing capabilities. So when somebody would call nine-eight, the call would be called, uh, would be allocated to the local call center based on the first three digits of your phone number. So in a state like Nevada, which has a high transientsy, people incoming and going, you might live here, but your phone number might still be an area code from Michigan. And your call was going to be routed to Michigan, which makes it very difficult then to do the system of care after the crisis. So the really good news is in September of this year, the federal, SAMSA was able to get the federal, the FCC work going. The FCC voted on the final rules in October seventeenth and now that will change. We will not have geolocation. So like nine-eight-eight, if things are, sorry, nine-one-one, if things really go badly, we can actually know where somebody is and still get to them. In nine-eight-eight, we will not have that capability. It's a protection for people's privacy. But we will have geo-routeing so that the phone number goes to the right call center. So that is big, big helpful news for us because we can't control it at the local level, but it really will improve our system of care because those calls will all come into Crisis Support Services of Nevada now. So that's where we are on the hub. Now moving to mobile crisis. Mobile crisis is probably the most challenging piece to stand up. It will likely also be the most impactful in terms of, again, not needing to roll ambulance or law enforcement, but having a behavioral health response. So what we're again shooting for is mobile crisis teams. This is healthcare, the world that we're talking about. And so in healthcare, we care a lot about what happens with the Medicaid system, which is the payer system we have for our lowest income individuals. And so there has been a state plan amendment passed for the Medicaid state plan that does create a rate for designated mobile crisis teams. So that is the first step in getting towards a viable, sustainable business model where mobile crisis can, we, we can realize mobile crisis at some point in our community. In really good news for Washoe County, the state has run a mobile crisis response team program for years. It's been going on over ten, eleven years. But the resources were limited and they had some challenges with vacancy rates. The vacancy rate most recently was about forty-nine percent in this program, which then impacts the ability to provide services. So the state was, or the county was able to work collaboratively with the state. The state gave us their budget for this program. And we are now running the children's mobile crisis response out of Washoe County Human Services Agency. That happened as of July one. And in the first several months, we've already doubled the amount of calls that we are able to run on. So that just same amount of money, just doing a little bit of system realignment to be able to make that a more effective program. We also have in our community, certified community behavioral health centers. They are our safety net providers for behavioral health services. In our community, that is Quest and Vitality are the two nonprofit organizations that do this. They also have some crisis response that they do. They do some mobile crisis for their clients. They also, Quest has crisis living rooms where folks can walk in and have a place to stabilize. So bottom line, there's still a lot more work to be done here where we need to get as a community is more of a public health response where you know anytime you call and you need somebody to come to you, that somebody can come. I missed a big, a big important one for Reno, Reno. We also have most teams, of course. You all have decided to move forward with having most teams that work with your Reno Police Department. And this is a coresponder model. So this is a law enforcement officer responding with a behavioral health professional. Amazing program, still really important, going to be important when not only is there a behavioral health crisis, but there's also a public safety concern. So the place where we want to get is if you have a behavioral health crisis and you don't have a public safety concern, let's just roll a behavioral health response. If you have a behavioral health crisis and there's also a public safety concern, then we would roll a most team. We're, we're a long ways from that right now. And so your most teams are carrying a lot of the work in terms of behavioral health crisis response in our community. So that's where we are in mobile crisis. It's at least a two-year build out to get to a place where we are getting closer to that public health model. More conversations to come. All right. So the next piece, I have a slide about this, but we, I'm going to turn it over to the man of the hour, Steve Shell, who is the Vice President of Behavioral Health for Renown, who's going to talk about the opening of the third element of a crisis response system. So we've talked about someone to call, someone to come to you. Now this is a safe place to be, someplace to go. So Steve, why don't you share our good news?
Come on up.
Thank you, Julia. Hello, everyone. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, all council members. It's an honor to be here today to talk about one of my favorite subjects. I've been a resident of Reno for 15 years now. I've done a variety of things in the behavioral health space around the state. And I have to say, this is my most favorite project today. So I'm just excited that we're finally here at the finish line and we'll be able to open very soon as I can share more in just a moment. The Renown Crisis Care Center, you'll see there, we've already got signage on the building. For those of you that know the state hospital campus, the state psychiatric hospital campus over off of Coletti Way, that's where this will be located. It's a huge campus for those of you that may know. So we knew signage was going to be very critical. So you'll see in the next slide, we want to make sure people know where to find us on the campus because it is very, a very large campus. So you'll see we've been very thoughtful about the signage throughout the property. I have to give a huge shout out to Mayor Sheevy because it was about six years ago when I joined her in a meeting with Richard Whitley, who was the State Director of Health and Human Services. And during that meeting, she was challenging him to think more about what he could possibly do here in Northern Nevada for behavioral health. And it was during that meeting that he said he had vacant space at the state hospital. And he said, if you can figure out what to put in that space, you can have it. And so we immediately started, you know, began to think about what could we put in that space? Several of us in the community, including Mayor Sheevy, had already been talking about crisis stabilization center. So this seemed to be a natural fit and I think you'll agree in just a moment. So just to give you an idea of some of the, of the operational overview, this is truly a safe place to go. We, this is for adults only, ages 18 and up. We are looking at a separate space for youth, for the community. But this is a place where if someone's in a mental health crisis or a substance use crisis, they can come to us anytime of the day or night. And I'll tell you more about what that process looks like in just a moment. This is a public-private partnership between Renown and the state of Nevada. And I call it a partnership because the state did give us the space for $0. So we're very thankful for that. This will be operated under the License of Renown Regional Medical Center. So it truly is a partnership, not just between Renown and the state, but between all of you and the rest of the community. As I said, it's located in a repurposed section of NAMS, otherwise known as Northern Nevada Adult Mental Health Services. There was space sitting there, I think for the last eight to 10 years that was not being utilized. And so we're truly, truly repurposing a, an existing building, which I love to see. This will be licensed as a crisis stabilization center. This is a new license designation for the state of Nevada. So for the last few years, we've been working with the state on those details to get that license set up. And as a side note, we've also worked with Medicaid to create a reimbursement rate specific to this type of service because we know sustainability is going to be key here. As I just said, this will be 24/7 for walk-ins and law enforcement drop off. So anyone can truly walk into this center 24/7. Anyone can bring their loved member, their, their family member to this, this facility. It will also be a drop off location for law enforcement. So if law enforcement identifies an adult out in the community that may, may, may be in a mental health crisis or be experiencing substance use, they can certainly bring them to this location instead of taking them to the jail and instead of taking them to an emergency room. We know the ER is not the appropriate setting for someone in a crisis, neither is the jail. These individuals truly need to be in a different setting. And I'll tell you more about that type of setting in just a moment. We designed this model to follow SAMSA's National Guidelines for Behavioral Health Crisis Care. For those of you that may not know, SAMSA is the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration in Washington. And they've worked very hard over the last several years to adopt these guidelines. A lot of other states around, around the country have implemented programs like this. So I'm excited to see, see this come into fruition in our state. Now, in terms of what somebody will receive when they arrive at our location, they will get a full assessment and triage process. Our goal is to figure out what is happening with that individual at that moment and get them connected to the right resources. Not everyone understands how to navigate the resources in the community, particularly when it becomes, when it comes to mental health and addiction services. Can be a very big challenge for that individual, but also for their family. So my team there will be helping guide that person and their family through that entire process. So they will receive a nursing assessment, a social work assessment, a medical exam. And we will truly try to figure out what's going on with that, with that individual in that moment and then get them to that next level of care that's appropriate. Most individuals will stay with us for a few hours. We hope to be able to get everyone out within 23 hours of arrival. We will have some beds available for those individuals that we can't place within 23 hours. So it's really intended to be a very short process. But again, it's about getting someone in the right level of care at the right moment. Just to tell you a little bit more about the infrastructure, because this was designed as a psychiatric hospital originally 20 years ago, we didn't have to make a lot of modifications to the space, but the state of Nevada did give us some ARPA funding to make some minor renovations. And I will say it's a very safe and secure facility. I think we've looked at every nook and cranny to make sure that it's a very safe, you know, because we'll have individuals coming to us that are actively suicidal, they could be homicidal. And so we want to make sure it's a very safe environment, not just for the patients, but also for our staff who will be taking care of them. There is a separate entrance from the state hospital. And that's why I showed you the signage in the beginning. We wanted to make sure signage truly just, you know, made this, differentiated us from the state hospital. There's a Sally Port for law enforcement to make it very easy so that officers can drop off someone and get back on the streets immediately. Mayor Sheevy and I and others timed the process in Phoenix when we toured there a few years ago and their officers were literally back on the streets within three minutes. And so that's our goal here in Reno as well. We want it to be a very smooth, quick process for law enforcement. We designed this to be a living room model. And what I mean by that is it's a very comfortable, peaceful space. It's not a sterile environment like an emergency room where you have lots of distractions going on. It truly is set up like a living room with very nice, comfortable lounge chairs that people, where people can sit while we're working behind the scenes, trying to figure out where they need to go. So it's a very comfortable space for the individual as well as their family. There is continuous light of sight from every piece of this, this space that we'll occupy. My staff will be able to see all individuals at all, at all moments of time to make sure they're safe while we're trying to figure out where they need to go. It's set up to have 25 chairs, but then we also have 10 bedrooms, as I mentioned, for those individuals that we can't get out within those 23 hours. And then there's a very nice waiting area for the families. We want to make sure the families feel very comfortable as well because it can be a very scary, traumatic experience for families when you're dealing with a loved one. And it's most, a lot of us know that from personal experience and it can be very traumatic. And so you have to really make sure you're taking very good care of the families as well. In terms of our staffing, I'm very proud of the staff we have hired. You can see here that we have a variety of staff that will be there 24/7, registered nurses, licensed social workers and so forth. I wanted to call out the certified peer recovery support specialist. Those are individuals who have lived experience with mental health or substance use. Studies have shown that individuals relate better to someone who's actually been through that type of crisis. And so the bulk of our staffing will be these peer recovery support specialists. And we've hired some really solid peers that really care about helping others get through their crisis. So that's a big chunk of our, our staffing model in addition to the other clinicians that you'll see there. So you may be wondering, once we have assessed and triaged, then what happens to these individuals? Well, I've listed a variety of options. The first one being an inpatient psychiatric or detox facility. Not everyone truly needs an inpatient bed. Those really are reserved for those individuals that just can't be stabilized within a few hours. They really need to be monitored for several days. And so some individuals we assess will be transferred either Reno Behavioral, St. Mary's, the state hospital, Carson Tahoe and so forth. But some individuals may truly just need outpatient services. We see a lot of individuals in our ERs today that have never seen a primary care physician, let alone a behavioral health professional. So not only will we be looking at their behavioral health needs, but we will also be looking at their medical needs and making those connections to the right partners in the community, which could be the FQHCs, which are HOPE's and Community Health Alliance, the CCBHCs that Julia alluded to, those are Quest and Vitality, as well as a whole host of other community providers. So again, it could be inpatient, it could be outpatient level of care that that individual needs. There could be other things going on with that individual such as housing issues. And so we are working very closely with the CARES campus and some of our other community partners to make sure if someone truly needs housing, that we can get them connected to those resources as well. And then I wanted to call out my bullet point there at the bottom. We're going to have a full-time care coordinator on staff. That is someone who will be maintaining contact with these individuals for at least one year. They will be checking in with that person and his or her family on a regular basis to find out how they're doing. Are they, did they maintain their appointments? Are they taking their medications? Are they running into issues with getting their medications? Do they need to come back and see us at the Crisis Care Center and so forth? And the purpose of that is to really give us some great data on where these individuals first and foremost coming from. But are the resources we are connecting them to truly working? We all know there are gaps in our mental health and addiction services in the community. And we're doing, I think, a great job as a community to really break through that. But I think over the next year, we're going to really be able to, to see if there are any other gaps that we may, may not have identified. As I said, this is not a renowned project. This is really a community project. And so you'll see a long list here of community partners that have been involved in the planning of this. We are working on service agreements with each of those entities just to make sure they understand the expectations, the types of individuals we truly can receive. We know that law enforcement may still have to take individuals to the emergency room if they are glaring medical issues. But we don't want law enforcement to have to spend a lot of time trying to make that decision in the field. So we created a screening tool called FAST. It's a field assessment screening tool that we are putting in the hands of law enforcement so they can figure out, do I take this individual to the emergency room or do I take them to the Crisis Care Center? We want to make sure it's a very smooth, easy process for our law enforcement. And then you'll see we're working closely with REMSUV, the 988 Call Center, NAMI, the CARES campus that I mentioned, and so on and so on. So it's truly taking all of these community partners to pull this off. I didn't mention at the very beginning, but we are planning to go live in very early 2025. I'm not going to say the date out just loud, loud because I don't want to jinx it. But it will be in the next few weeks. And all of you will be invited to the grand opening that we're currently planning. But I'm just so thrilled that we're finally at this point to get this open. It's been a long time coming. I think it's going to be a game changer for our community and really help direct people to the care that they truly need. That has been a challenge in our community and around our country for a long, long time. And it's, it's, it's time that we break through that and resolve that. And I think this is a great step forward and I just appreciate everybody's support in that. And I'm open to take any questions that you may have before I turn it back to Julia.
Okay. I, I don't know. I'm speechless because we've been all working on this for so long. I think, Julia, you said what, five, seven years now? And this, this was not easy and, and I'm so glad you mentioned Mr. Whitley, Richard Whitley. And not to mention Governor Steve Cicillacc at the time also listened intently. And I believe this is the number one crisis in our country that is sort of this dirty, dark secret. But anyone that knows that has family members who have struggled with mental illness, mental health issues, there hasn't been any services. I know I dealt with this with my brother and I'm the mayor and could not find any services. And after working with a lot of other families that goes through the same worry at 2:00 AM, if you're going to get that phone call, those types of things. And so I'm so grateful for the both of you and everyone that has worked so hard. Because there was a team of us that all got together and I think, you know, Julie, if it wasn't for you and Steve getting it over the finish line, you both are phenomenal individuals. I'm so grateful because anyone that goes to the ER should recognize how difficult navigating an ER is now because they're dealing with a lot of behavioral health issues, which is bad on both sides because let's say you're having a heart attack. You might not get seen right away because they're also dealing with behavioral health issues. And so I always say, you know, ERs are where they fix broken bones, not broken brains. And this is really going to be a game changer in our community for families that will have access to what do I do? What, I don't know what to do, right? Now they will know what to do. Our officers, they have really challenging jobs. They are not behavioral health experts. And so they, this gives them an opportunity to get help to people in a different capacity. So I just, I cannot thank you both enough and, and Dr. Woodard and even Dean Dow, who came with us. There was a whole host of us. I don't know. What was it? 10? 10 of us?
About 10.
About 10 of us. And it was just such an impressive model. And we said, we need this in Nevada. So. And you guys often, whenever you see people, you know, I can't help but think when we walk down the street and you see people that are clearly maybe having a crisis, the mental health crisis, maybe talking to themselves, maybe not having their medications, those kinds of things. We tend to do out of sight, out of mind. And with this program, I want you guys to think about it and identify it when you see it. And we now will have help because oftentimes we just go, oh, gosh. You know, so we, and then you, people walk right past it. They step over someone in a mental health crisis. So anyway, I'm super, super grateful. I, I'm trying not to get overly excited just yet because, you know, we've had a lot of setbacks, but because of these two, they made it happen. And so I'm very, very, very grateful and I look forward to celebrating this. I guess one question, then I'm going to hand it over to my colleagues. What is it looking like with our other partners that are going to help us? Because we're going to have to, you know, there's a model to look at who has beds currently. The other thing I want to point out, because we're helping expand CHA, if, did you notice how that's one of your first partners? And now Mr. Delgado will have the room to be part of this whole initiative because of the expansion of his mental health unit at Neil Road. So anyway, so that's really good. So just know that's another resource for this council because you also played a big role in helping expand that, right? So wow, I wish, I wish this would have been around when my brother was alive because this could have saved his life, you know? And I don't want anyone to ever go through that. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, um, thank you so much for the presentation. I've been here the entire time that the mayor has sort of staked her, her, her everything on getting this done. And you, you all and many others, the list that you shared are making that a reality. My stepmom once upon a time worked at the Nevada Mental Health Campus there. I had opportunity to visit there several times. She was a psychiatric nurse. My father was a psychologist of many times shared. You know, they came here in the seventies, so they saw it all. And when they came here, we were easily back in the forties and fifties in terms of how we dealt with mental health in almost the late seventies. So we were so far behind. We remain behind. But this is a huge, huge step. I mean, you've been talking about it forever. I'm so glad to see it happening now. One question I had, I had a chance to tour the, the new campus next to the CARES campus that is really has a focus on mental health, behavioral health. And I was just wondering how these programs might intersect. This is, that's the one with Northern Nevada HOPEs. And so, and I couldn't believe how many rooms they had designated for interview rooms that they had ability to move right from an interview to action to help people stabilize right in that facility. So let, I hand it back to you.
Yeah, I'll just, I will just take a, a quick piece. I do want to recognize, so just starting with the CARES campus and just generally. So because we have had gaps in our behavioral health system of care, the county has over the the county has, over the course of many years, ended up being the direct service providers, right? So many people are not aware that we have 30-plus clinicians who work directly for the county, and eight of them are assigned to the CARES campus. So there are clinicians on campus, at the CARES campus, that are starting that work. What we talked to you about was the crisis system of care, which is really that sub 24-hour crisis intervention.
Right.
But that whole crisis system has to interact with the overall behavioral health system of care. Because if there isn't a good handoff, a warm handoff from the Crisis Care Center into that ongoing service, that is significant. And certainly both the Hopes expansion that you are referring to, the CHA expansion that you referred to, and I want to give credit to our two CCBHCs, Quest and Vitality, we are seeing growth in outpatient services.
Right.
There's probably some pieces in the middle that we still need to work on. So more intensive outpatient.
Including where people do stay if they need to be hospitalized. Because, and, and just taking this a step further, we, we do have a, a number of people who are homeless, who also refuse care. And much of their homelessness and their decision to refuse care is driven by some maybe faulty judgments, impairments, who knows what. But they've chosen both to be in that environment and not seek care. And so they potentially have the possibility of getting arrested, right? And end up in our prison system. And so I just, you know, obviously you, you in your new role have to help figure all this out. How do we deal with the prisons, the hospitals, the hopes, the cares, and, and this early intervention or crisis center?
Well, I was just wanting to say, I think the additional services at the CARES campus are definitely going to enhance our overall crisis response system. I think the more resources we can add along the way are better. But we'll be working very closely between our team and the CARES campus team.
So then, I did want to just note, I'm here to talk to you about four initiatives. That was the crisis response system. The other three, we're not going anywhere to level to that level of depth, just to reassure you.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
No, that is okay. So there's just three quick more things, because one is about the justice system piece. So if there are any other specific questions about the crisis response system, now would be the time, but otherwise I'll just jump into these. And I promise you, nowhere near as long as that first part.
Go ahead.
Very quick, but just very quick touching, because I want you to know the other regional initiatives that you're participating in. So when it comes to the crisis response system, huge kudos to the Reno Police Department, which has been actively involved in this work from day one. Okay, so moving on to the sequential intercept model, based on the comment from Councilman, Councilwoman, excuse me, Duer. The region has been working on this as well. So SIM is a widely acceptable, widely accepted framework that identifies key points within the justice system where we can divert individuals who are at risk of interaction with the justice system, driven primarily because they have behavioral health challenges, going specifically to the point that you were raising.
Okay, you have a whole PowerPoint on.
I have two, three slides.
All right.
So we have, we have, as a region, chosen to work towards adopting the sequential intercept model as championed by Judge Walker and Judge Lou in the Second Judicial District. But there are also many judges that are doing good work at the Reno Municipal Court as well. I just, I'm not, I'm going to try not to name everybody because I will forget someone. So just the basic concept is, is there intercepts within the justice system? And within each intercept, we have opportunities to divert or deflect individuals who are having a behavioral health challenge. Intercept zero is, let's not have them have any contact with the justice system. That is the crisis response system we just talked about. But intercept one is now you've had contact with law enforcement. How do we make sure that law enforcement has the tools to make sure that they can divert and deflect? Intercept two is now you've been arrested, you have your initial detention, your first court appearance. How can we, at that moment in time, divert or deflect somebody who has a behavioral health challenge? Now you're deeper into the justice system, or you're in the specialty courts perhaps, or you're in the jail or dispositional court. What can we do in that setting? And then intercept four is reentry. So you have served your time and you are reentering community. What are we doing to address your behavioral health needs at that point? We're, as a community, in the sequential intercept model, working, because crisis response is kind of handled by those coalitions. For the sequential intercept model, we're working on intercepts one through four. The only reason we're not doing five at this point is that's largely state-driven, and we're choosing to tackle the things we can have more influence at, at the local level. So there's a coalition of folks who are also working on this. Last slide on this topic, we are, this is what's been done so far. So there was a behavioral health summit focused on the SIM that happened in January of 2024, that about 150 folks attended. There are about 25 individuals from our community who have traveled to Miami-Dade County to learn about this model. Three are currently at the City of Reno Assistant Manager Hodge, Chief Nance, and then Andrew Sherbandi, who is your Specialty Courts Manager at Reno Municipal Court, have all been to Miami-Dade with the crew of us who have gone. It's resource, it's, it's in my lap, so I'm facilitating that project, herding the cats, if you will. We have also been able to take some of our community investment dollars and contract with social entrepreneurs to have some project management on this so that I'm not trying to do all this by myself, but we have some project management support. We have a core team that's been working on it. And the first thing that we have accomplished is a mapping exercise so that we know what we're doing well already, and we can identify the gaps on where we need to lean into. So by the end of the year, you should have in your hand a map that shows what we're doing well and what we still have to work on, and a strategic framework that will drive our work for the next couple of years in this specific project. Again, all about diverting individuals who have behavioral health challenges from the justice system. Your law enforcement, RPD, and your courts, municipal courts are involved in these initiatives. So that's sequential intercept model. We're finishing the mapping, finishing the strategic plan. And then from that, we're going to do some very specific mapping on gaps in the behavioral health system. That, because it's great if you can divert and deflect folks from the justice system, but if there isn't a behavioral health system there to catch them, that's a problem. So we're going to work on that. So that's the sequential intercept model, high-level overview. I'm just going to keep powering through, and then you can ask questions at the end. Okay. So Washoe Behavioral Health Center, this is exciting in our region. So when I'm saying Washoe Behavioral Health Center, you may know it better, more, better as formerly West Hills. So you may recall that West Hills closed its door. That opened up some significant gaps in our behavioral health system. The county chose to move forward with 4.5 million of our ARPA dollars to purchase the building. And then we were able to get 14.5 million awarded from the state to remodel the building. So on the ARPA timelines, we will be working to reopen this facility, or we will be open to remodel this facility by July of 26. It anticipates having half of the building dedicated to children's services, half of the building dedicated to adult services, recognizing, as was brought up earlier, that not everybody, once their crisis is stabilized, is going to be, that's going to be enough, that there will, that we need more options in our community where we can divert someone to, where they can have a longer level, longer, longer stay and get more stable and more able to rejoin the community. So that's the Behavioral Health Center. We, right now, are looking at a psychiatric residential treatment facility for children. This is where we hope to put Crisis Stabilization Center for children as well. I will just say, in the children and families model, you really want to keep children in their home if you can. But if you can't, it is helpful to have a facility. This would also be a respite center for foster families and adoptive families who just need to have time out to be able to reset if there's a behavioral health crisis. We're also talking about having a CSSEC center for children who have been victims of sex trafficking. This would be the receiving center so that they can get the appropriate care that they need. And then an adult live-in treatment program. One of the things we're also trying to address here is sometimes people just don't get care because they can't get an assessment. So we would have an assessment center to be able to wrap, get people assessed more rapidly so that they can be connected to care. And then we hope to make it a training facility to help address our workforce development challenges in our region, because there aren't enough places where people can do their rotations and get the hours that they need to be able to become professionals. So that is the entire presentation right now on the Washoe Behavioral Health Center, formerly known as West Hills, the direction that we are headed there. But that will be a significant asset for our community, once it is built. And because the county owns it, we are able to tailor the services there to some of the populations that we think have the highest need. And then finally, we have a focus on children and families. This one is really short. The first thing is the transfer of, from, of the Children's Mobile Crisis Team from the state to the county. That's meaningful. Obviously, the, the children's efforts that we have in the Washoe Behavioral Health Center. And then we are working collaboratively. So the state Medicaid system is undergoing a huge behavioral health transformation for children project funded by a tax on providers that is putting some more money into the Medicaid system for children's behavioral health. So we are actively participating in that. And then there's another Medicaid initiative that is an expansion for reentry or incarcerated youth. So same thing, let's catch kids as they're coming out of the system and make sure that they're getting the services that they need. So we're actively participating in that. And then the Children's Cabinet is leading with Annie Zucker, who I think many of you know, is leading a youth mental health collective impact project where we're all collaborating to fill some of the gaps, and we are actively participating in that. So that is the entirety of the presentation. So four initiatives, the crisis response system, which we focused on today. But I also want you to know that we're working on the sequential intercept model, justice diversion. We are working on opening, reopening the West Hills, formerly known as West Hills Hospital, as the Washoe Behavioral Health Center. And then we have these focused efforts on children and families. And with that, I'm done.
Wow, I love it, I love it, love it. I want to commend Washoe County and exactly what you have brought to the table. Because this is your passion, and this is what you're so good at, Julia. I'm so grateful that they have you. And you, I know you're doing all this, a lot of hard work. And I, I couldn't be, like I said, more grateful to the county and what they're doing. Because honestly, this is a kind of a game changer that we're seeing a significant shift over there and priorities, and I'm, I'm so proud. So I want to say thank you from the bottom of my heart. I also do need to mention, there's someone that I always call. I'm like, where are we at, where are we at? And I know I drive him crazy, but it's really important because I, I know how hard he works on our side, is JW Hodge. I don't know where, where he is, if he's over there, I can't tell. And so I'm really grateful that he's also keeping a watchful eye and partnership in any capacity. So you let us know how we can help. We want to be able to enhance on, you know, the programs and things that you do. And so, Julia, I'm just so grateful. I love it, it's amazing.
I will, I will take back the commendation to the county, but my message and why I'm here today is it will take a village. And so I want you to know what we're doing. I want to commend the City of Reno staff from JW Hodge, as well as RPD, the municipal courts, like some of the, so many folks that have been helpful in these endeavors. So thank you for your participation.
I'm glad you, talking about the courts. This is the first time I'm seeing all of us work together. Councilman Reese took me to a graduation yesterday for, who, it was Judge O'Neill?
O'Neill, yep, our Camo Reno Veterans Court. Fantastic specialty court. And Mr. Sherbandi was, is an integral part of that court.
And then also your community court, Judge Tassett Stevens is doing great work as well.
And I should commend Jackie because one of the things, and she's very passionate about all this too, but she also, when I came to her and I said, we really need some beds for some of these people that come out of community court. And Jackie said, don't worry, I got you. And she's getting them beds, well, units, from Sage Street so that, right out of that program. So those are the kinds of things that'll make a difference. But it's actually all of us that are working together. And I'm really grateful that we have finally, I think, figured out how to get things done together, right? Instead of separately. So thank you, thank you.
Thanks so much for the time.
I'm going to start with, Councilman Reese.
Oh, thank you so much. A couple of things. First, of course, there's a tremendous amount of thanks to go around. And I certainly believe that a county, through their exceptional leadership and Chair Hill, in really addressing so many facets of it. I, I know that it's a team sport over there, and that so many people and so many departments are working on it, from the public safety side, through the court system, the sheriff. Ms. Raddi, your work now as the Behavioral Health Administrator, there are so many people to thank. But I will say, and it was why I had to pass to Ms. Duer initially, just because I was a little bit emotional about it. But I recall in 2014, so now 10 years ago, I sat down with Madam Mayor, who at the time was not the mayor. And she said, you know, I'm, I'm gonna try and become the mayor. And I said, well, why would you want it? And she said, because I can make a difference in the public health crisis of mental health in this country. And I'll always remember that conversation because it tells you also about like, why would any, I, of course, at the time was not an elected official, had no intention of being an elected official, but always gave me a pause to think about, what is the why? Why do we do what we do sometimes? Which is very difficult work, as you well know, from having been a council member and a senator. And she said to me that day, 10 years ago, we're going to have a 24-hour crisis response system here. And 10 years later, we're so close. Soon thereafter, she introduced me to Steve Shell, and he's had a couple of different stops here in town, had come out of the South, I want to say Georgia, if I recall correctly, if my mind serves me well, it's near enough. And, you know, some stops at, at places along the way, in Las Vegas, a great facility there. Doing good work still to this day. Of course, Reno Behavioral Health, another great stop along the way. But it was truly today, and I, I wish the room were packed and overflowing, there were media here, because what you presented is perhaps some of the most impactful information that I have received in the time that I've been on council. And I just owe an incredible debt of gratitude to so many people, but especially to you, Madam Mayor. And I know how important this is to you personally. And to, to take 10 years to get to that point, I know can seem very frustrating because we all want something to happen quickly. But political life is what it is, budgets are what they are, administrations come and go. But Madam Mayor, you never waver in your desire to see some of these things happen. So I thank you.
Well, Devin, that's very kind of you, but we also have a very personal connection to this. And you do too, and you don't talk about it a lot. So we've had a lot of these conversations and how much you care about mental health. And I remember, do you remember, Steve? Devin, you're right, because I remember there was a picture with both of you who met on a Southwest Airlines flight. And then we all started putting mental health pieces together. And so I remember that. So that's what he's talking about. You can't tell that Steve's accent, accent is Nevada? It's a Nevada accent?
It's our Reno accent.
It's your Reno accent. Anyway, go ahead, Councilwoman Vice Mayor Taylor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't have much to say that other people haven't said sincere thanks. You said game changer, Madam Mayor, and I think this is a game changer for our community. And I'm so proud to be part of a place where we have dedicated professionals and experienced people working towards this. And of course, your leadership, Madam Mayor, through all this is amazing. Thank you. And then my last thing is, please let us know how we can help in any way possible, at any time. And if I, I think we have a whole team here. If you have any roadblock, blocks or need anything, we will be here to help you in the county. Thank you.
Councilman Martinez?
Thanks so much, Madam Mayor. I'd just like to echo, obviously, all the kudos that have been going around. And thank you all for your leadership in providing, yeah, both of you, obviously, providing the leadership in this space and for your tenacity, Madam Mayor, in making sure that we address such a critical need that affects a lot of us, even whether it's spoken about or it isn't, and a lot of households. And so just making sure that we have the services to provide to our constituents. It is going to be a game changer. So I appreciate everybody who has worked on this so diligently to get us where we're at today. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Anderson?
Well, I just, I, I don't have much more to say that everybody else hasn't already said, other than I have four friends that have lost teens in the last six years that had absolutely zero idea of where to start. And the, the shame and the confusion was overwhelming. And so for my first meeting, to be able to have these resources, to be able to share that good news to other parents that are going to be going through this, and then other just humans that have family and loved ones that they care about, I am just wildly grateful. So thank you.
Councilwoman, sorry, Duer? Anything else?
No, well, there was one thing, when you mentioned, the, the one thing I wanted to ask is you were talking about the process related to the prison system or the, right, justice system. And what I was wondering is, those processes always take a long time gathering all the info, figuring this all out. But what today is happening? Can, can, if some, somebody's having a crisis today, what, what can we offer them? Where can we direct them? We call 988, 998, I want to make sure I get it, 988? And is, is everything operational? I mean, what would happen today?
If, if you were to call or text 988 right now, you would get an immediate response. Text is very important for our young people because they don't tend to pick up the phone. So text is very important. And so there is a, there is a crisis response now. On the justice system piece, it wasn't like folks went to Miami and then just waited around for the strategic planning. So there has been some really good work forward. Judge Walker is running a new court called the Competency Court. And so it's really directed at those individuals who have been deemed not competent to stand trial. And we had some meaningful backups in our system where folks were sitting in the jail for a very long time, sometimes longer than their actual sentence would have been, while they're waiting to be found competent because of just various hurdles within the system. And so there's already been some pretty significant results there with a spirit of not just finding somebody, getting somebody back to competency so that they can stand trial, but also making sure they are getting behavioral health care. So that is already happening. In our jails, the sheriff has worked with uh, Northern Nevada Adult Mental Health Services to um, redirect some resources so that we now have a jail mental health based unit.
Oh.
That didn't exist until just recently, right in the jail. So again, primarily targeting individuals who are struggling with competency issues, but also making sure that they get access to behavioral health care while they are um, with us at the jail. So there are big, big folders that are being moved while we are also doing the work of the assessment, the planning to make sure that we know where we want to go next.
Um, is the unit with the 10 beds at the mental health campus, that's open or will soon be open, or I, I wasn't sure the timing?
Oh, the Crisis Care Center will be opening in the next few weeks.
That's what I thought.
And that will be the 25 chairs and the 10 beds.
Right.
Yes.
Yeah. So that in a few weeks, so we'll call it mid-December?
Well, uh, early 2025, but early January.
Oh, fine. Okay. But I mean, that's fantastic news. I just wanted to get a bookmark on that.
Can you all get an invitation to a room?
Oh, yes.
Oh, well, okay.
Yay.
Yes, very soon.
Then I'll really celebrate. Okay, thank you so, do you have any questions? No, okay. Thank you so much. Um, I just, I can't believe it, actually.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Steve and Julia.
Thank you.
It's so great to see you. Okay, I don't think we have to um, accept this presentation. So moving on, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We're moving on to item D1, which is the Market Street update.
Great. Do you have any public comment on this item?
We don't have any public comment. However, we did receive one comment associated with this item and it was one letter of concern. And that has been distributed to the Reno City Council.
Good evening. For the record, Angela Fuess, Assistant Director for Development Services. This is a very quick agenda item. Super quick. In fact, we're done.
There you go.
Any, any buttons? There we go. Okay. Um, so a, a year ago, it was back in September of 2023, council adopted the Market Street Abandonment Development Agreement. Now with that, there was an abandonment that was tied to some specific timings. The abandonment wasn't going to move forward until we knew that everything in, in yellow, uh, which is the RTC Mill Street project. We knew that that project had been constructed. So the Market Street abandonment is everything in red. Um, right now, we actually need that road, so we weren't comfortable doing an abandonment. But once all the improvements are made to, to Mill Street, which will include widening and adding some, some different traffic lights at different locations, we will no longer need that portion of Market Street. So this development agreement ties the abandonment to the timing of the RTC project. There is a requirement on all development agreements that one year after that agreement is recorded, the applicant has to come back and give a one-year update. Because um, the, the timing of that Mill Street project, we actually, I actually haven't started construction and we knew that all along. Um, RTC is on the same trajectory, so they haven't slowed down in the timeline. They're looking to start construction in March of this next year. And they think they'll be done with that project in the middle of 2026. So in terms of an update, there's not much to share with you because nothing has happened yet with the abandonment while we're still waiting for that Market Street or the Mill Street construction to be completed. But as, as a requirement, the applicant's representative is here to give you an update on um, kind of what he has done.
And just a quick question. This was the one with uh, Mr. Dolan?
Correct.
Dolan, he was here?
Correct.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, good afternoon. Counsel, for the record, Garrett Gordon, uh, today on behalf of, as Councilmember Doer said, the Dolan family, uh, specifically uh, Dolan Dodge. Uh, I think Ms. Fuess did a great job. Uh, we came before this body about a year ago, crafted a development agreement. It really set a number of items that had to be completed before the abandonment could be recorded. And first and foremost was RTC had to complete the widening and add a new traffic light. And when that occurred, this segment of Market Street would no longer be necessary. So we're patiently waiting for RTC to move forward next year with those Mill Street improvements. And until then, the, the street will remain open and nothing will be recorded until those benchmarks have been satisfied. But I'll have to answer any questions. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. Any questions from the council?
Um, I only have one.
Go ahead.
Um, when the Mill Street is done, I guess this is for you, Ms. Fuess. When the Mill Street is done, um, we took an action. Would that just become automatic or do we have to take another action?
No further action is needed from council. The abandonment will record. And so what you've already approved will then be effectuated.
Okay, thanks. All right, may I get a motion?
Move to accept the report.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed, motion carries. All right, moving right along. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We're on item D2, Truckee, oh, Globe, Jacob's Globe Plaza.
All right. Thank you so much. Do you have any public comment on this item?
On D2, we do not have any public comment registered. For the record, we did receive two comments associated with this item, one letter of opposition and one letter of concern. Those have been distributed to the Reno City Council.
Okay, thank you so much. At this time, I'm going to hand it off to Angela Fuess again.
Okay, thank you for the record, Angela Fuess, Assistant Director with Development Services. A little bit of background on this. It was in May of 2022 that council approved a conditional use permit for the Globe Plaza Outdoor Festival. There were kind of two triggers that were reviewed as part of that conditional use permit. One was to allow this outdoor amusement or recreation center. And the other was to allow live entertainment. So that was bundled together as one conditional use permit that was approved. About a year later, the uh, conditional use permit went back for an amendment. It just went to Planning Commission. It was not appealed, so it did not go before City Council. That amendment allowed it to expand to the Sands Parcel, as we called it back then, the Sands Parcel, which is the J Resort. And the intent there was that the J Resort or the Sands would be able to advertise events happening at the Globe Plaza. Uh, because of our regulations on signs and what we consider to be on-premise and off-premise. At that time, the Globe Plaza was a separate parcel, separate uh, project area from the J Resort. And the J Resort is the one that actually has signage to talk about what they're, what they're proposing to have in terms of concerts. So a lot of nuances there, but at the end of the day, that was approved back in 2023 by Planning Commission. Um, again, it was not appealed to City Council. So one thing that was required as part of this conditional use permit is that the applicant has to come back on a yearly basis. And they have to come back to council and basically present an update on, on how their project is operating. And they have a whole safety and operations plan that the city manages. And so what council was looking for when they added that condition is to kind of get feedback from, is it working? Are there things that need to be adjusted? So council has asked for a little bit of background from staff, so I'm here to represent that piece. Mister, Mister Gordon will represent from the applicant's perspective, where he's been in the past year and what they're planned in the next year. So just big picture, wanted to give everyone again a, a heads up of where this is at. This is within our downtown area. Globe Plaza is that yellow area on the left. And of course, the J Resort is that area on the right. The biggest topic we've probably discussed or had discussed is related to noise. So I wanted to highlight some of the things that are conditioned as part of this use permit. Number one, they have unlimited noise for up to 20 events. So in a year's timeframe, they can have 20 events with no restrictions, no limitations on noise. Outside of those 20 events, they are limited to 85 decibels. Um, they're also limited in terms of how long these events or these concerts can go. So no matter what, uh, the music has to be shut down by 11:00 PM. They can still have people, um, you know, closing up and cleaning up up until midnight on Fridays and Saturdays. But the rest of the week, they have to be done with everything by 11:00. Here's a list of the last year's events, and all of these were permitted through a special activity permit. Typically, the way this would, this works as part of the conditional use permit. If they think they're going to have more than 3,700 people at an event, they need to go through a special activity permit. Otherwise, they can do it by rights. I think because they're new and they're still trying to figure out how many people are going to come to their events and their concerts. They were proactive and they submitted special activity permits for all 20 events. So here's some dates and here's some times. Again, Mr. Gordon will be able to give you details about what actually happens at these events. But we just wanted to highlight that all 20 of the events that happened this last year were reviewed as part of that special activity. Most of the events took place during the warmer season, so that May through October. And again, the, the biggest question we've, we've had from council is, well, how have the noise levels been? We understand that they get 20 events with no restrictions on noise, but they are still monitoring all events. They had, I think, three different noise monitors set up on their site, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, noise is being monitored. So anytime we want to know how loud an event was, was taking place, um, they can provide that data to us. We also had questions on how many complaints have we had in this last year? So there's about four different complaints that have registered. I will say that two of these are, are related more to construction-related activities, so not necessarily related to events at the Globe Plaza. One had to do with some, some fencing that had been blown down. Another had to do with some signage that had been blown down. And that was last January. And then we had two complaints about excessive noise. Now, when we look at the timeframe of that event, that was from April 20th. That event was not at the Globe Plaza. That event was a private event at the J Resort. So just want to highlight that um, any events at the J Resort are not part of the Globe Plaza. And I think there's some misconceptions maybe from the community, but I wanted to highlight that the Globe, Globe Plaza really is a standalone uh, venue. And so anything that the J Resort does is not tied to these conditional use permit uh, conditions. Okay, so let's just give you a couple of examples. I'll just pick three random events so that we could look at the noise. Now, this, this noise monitoring equipment is amazing. It measures the noise every second of every day. So it crashed my computer about 12 times to prepare a graph that just tells you how much data is involved in this. So this is a 24-hour window. So this is on October 14th. There was an event called the, the Reno Decompression Event. So at midnight on the very left, up to midnight again on the very right, here's how the noise fluctuated. And it's hard to kind of gauge, well, how loud is this? So for the most part, we're not exceeding 85 decibels. Kind of an interesting little fact. And again, the hard part with this is anytime there's a train or a loud car or a motorcycle, you're going to see a spike. So sometimes it's difficult to say that just because an event happened, that the event was the cause of the noise. Well, we can see over a 24-hour window, there was a lot of fluctuations. So again, here's one Reno decompression. Here's another one, the 90s house party. So those 90s, they know how to have a good time, good music. Um, their music actually wasn't, wasn't crazy and out of control. And I thought it was interesting too, again, at six or eight in the morning, we had a couple spikes. And then when the activities were having, people were down there, 90s party was raging between 5:00 and 10:00 PM. Again, a few spikes, but generally not that bad. And finally, one more Reno Night Market. So they have these about once a month. They're more of um, what do you call it, more family oriented, where maybe there's music, there's crafts, there's events happening. Um, that actually had the higher fluctuation in noise. And again, that was from a longer stretch. So between 1:00 in the afternoon and 11 o'clock at night, a mix of noise levels fluctuating. Again, it could have been from the event, it could have been from somebody that had maybe a microphone. It could have been literally from somebody driving by, not associated with this event at all. So generally speaking, um, again, 20 events, we do have noise data from all events, but this was just a snapshot to just give you guys an idea of the, the noise levels that we're hearing. Okay. And like I said, the applicant's representative is also here and he'll give you a formal presentation on what to expect this coming year.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of council, for the record, Garrett Gordon. Uh, today it's my pleasure to speak on behalf of Jacob's Entertainment and provide the annual update. Um, with me today is Jonathan Boware, Jacob's Entertainment Regional Vice President. Um, also Chris Seewell, um, JMF Presents, you may have seen in the paper this morning. He's our new partner for the Globe Plaza and Festival Grounds, and he'll be here for any questions later in the presentation. And last, but certainly not least, uh, Mr. Jacob's son, Richard Jacob's is here in the audience uh, as well. So I do uh, appreciate these annual updates because it's nice to do this about a year ago. And then come back and say, hey, what happened? Was it success? Did it work? Was the vision that I presented, that Jacob presented, in fact, come to fruition? The comments that we heard from this body and the conditions put on, were they in fact working? I can absolutely say this has been a extraordinary, successful summer and we're very excited for 2025. As Ms. Fuess uh, indicated, everyone knows where the Globe Plaza i- is. They're on Fourth Street, uh, bordered by Washington on the west. Ralston on the east. So condition number 23, that's why we're here today. It says the applicant shall present an annual report, uh, the project's operations, um, with the first report completed within one year. So that's why I'm here today to give you a report uh, of what's, of what's happened. You can see my presentation will be littered. I just would say littered with uh, with amazing pictures, both in the evening, um, during the day and at night of just how this space has been activated. Jacob's had a vision of Fourth Street, to get people down there, to get residents down there, to get tourists down there, to get families down there. And I can absolutely say it's been extraordinarily successful. As Angela said, 20 uh, or so events, um, certainly ranged from all over the spectrum. From the Reno Night Market, which you heard from Ms. Fuess, very family oriented, local vendors, local DJ, uh, kids activities. You'll see some pictures of some arts and crafts. That was great, more of a community cultural event to get folks, uh, locals down there and activating that space. And then certainly a wide variety of, of concerts, the 90s House Party, Blues Traveler, uh, Bone Thugs-N-Harmony. And you can see, I just put in there some of the larger uh, events where tickets were sold, what those numbers look like. So we were over 2,000 tickets sold for Bone Thugs-N-Harmony. Uh, that was my, maybe one of my high school uh, bands I used to appreciate. I did attend that concert. Uh, Blue Oyster Cult Concert, over a, a thousand tickets sold. Uh, the Maoli Concert, um, over 2,300 tickets sold. Have some great pictures of that event. Blues Traveler, again, over 1,100. Uh, and you can see Don Felder. It, it's a wide variety. We're trying to bring as many people, locals, tourists, families down here to activate this Globe Plaza. Tramples with Turtles, uh, certainly uh, was the favorite, over 1,500 tickets sold. Uh, Tacos and Tequila, Hispanic kind of concert, Cultural Night Weekend was fantastic with many uh, Hispanic um, bands who, who were um, who were present. And then the Asian Moon Festival. Um, that was not a ticketed event, but opened up for the festival for the Asian community. And we had over 2,000 guests there who got to participate in, in that event. Everclear, um, who all of us may know from years ago, over 1,200 tickets sold, certainly touring again, great to have them there. And then again, the Reno Night Market. And also that, last but certainly not least, um, the Reno Phil. Uh, when I came before this body and said, we absolutely envisioned the Reno Phil using this venue for some of their events. And so it was a fantastic event. The music of Tina Turner came out, uh, middle of last, middle of this year. Um, had an event at the Globe Plaza and J, J Resort and Jacob's family stepped up and said, we'll not only host this, but we'll donate to it to make sure it's successful. So they made a personal sponsorship, a contribution of over $90,000 to make sure this Reno Phil event was successful, and it certainly was. So just a picture I'd like to show, the Maoli Concert, that's uh, the band's kids who traveled over here, kind of backstage, having a good time. Very family oriented uh, event. And on the right, Bone Thugs-N-Harmony, uh, kind of a cool thing they do, kind of before uh, concerts or after concerts, kind of VIP, you can meet some of the band members um, and hang out with them over at the J Resort or even uh, in some cases at the Globe Plaza. Reno Night Market on the left-hand side. When I came before this body, I not only stressed, we're excited to bring in concerts and acts, but also community, also family-friendly activities. And so you can see here, it's just a typical Reno Night Market where you have families there, they're doing arts and crafts. There's a, a, a local DJ, a local acoustical artist, you can see there on the left-hand side, uh, local vendors, local food. It, it's really been a great success and averaged about, at the beginning, a couple hundred people, and then word got out and we were close to 2,000 uh, at the end uh, of, of the season. And on the right-hand side, um, the bicycles, uh, certainly we were hoping that everyone wouldn't drive there, that they would take the opportunity to ride their bikes, come hang out, even walk. And that's a picture kind of early in the season. And as it progressed, we saw even more of those bicycles coming, not only at Reno, uh, Night Market, but at even concerts, uh, locals coming down on their bikes and hanging out and enjoying the acts. So you can see, I, I, I love this picture because you can see two things. One, kind of how we've activated this in the daytime. So folks driving by, maybe they're locals, maybe they're from out of town and say, hey, what's going on there? What are those night shade structures? What are all those people doing uh, in, in this venue? Um, how can we get involved? Where do we buy tickets? And so we've, we've activated during the daytime and then of course, at nighttime as well. And you can see it's a great angle from the stage here. You got the J Resort in the background. You can see the Reno skyline. But then all that time, money and effort put into creating this kind of arts and culture district, all that Burning Man art that was put in a couple of years ago. Now you can see the vision that now it's there. People are enjoying it. It's part of the experience at the Globe Plaza. The old replica signs you could see from some of the motels. Some of the other signs that have been purchased from a local artist, um, who, who creates these for downtown Reno, those signs are on. You get that neon vibe. And so we've got a lot of um, feedback from folks who said that the whole vibe in downtown Reno with the retro lights, the artwork, the local vendors and the Reno skyline backdrop and an outdoor urban atmosphere has just been spectacular and we're And we're excited to even go forward with even more of bands and experiences next year. Couple other great pictures here. This was at the Hispanic Culture Event. A band on the Zeta was there, really rocked the crowd, which was fun. Everclear, again, I love this view when you kind of see this urban amphitheater type setting where you have the J Resort and the other downtown skyline in the background, the shade structures, the stage. You can see it's packed. You can also see, since I came before you last time, where it was just kind of standing room only, or maybe folks would bring their chairs. We did put in these kind of high-end risers to give visitors even a better experience. So you could buy a seat, sit in a riser, there's some VIP tables. And then you can even on your phone, order, you know, drinks or food, kind of stay out of the lines and not skip the show. So as we continue to modernize this venue with feedback from guests, I'm excited to come back next year and tell you what's even better. So as is my favorite, which Councilmember Anderson, congratulations to be here. I love to always go back and focus on our master plan and our downtown action plan. What boxes does this check? I pulled my prior presentation for the Globe Plaza. And what I promised or what I proposed that this would do isn't in fact doing it. And I can say absolutely it is. Just two quick slides on the master plan. And these are all policies that come right from your down, right from your master plan. Community development. I propose that the Globe Plaza would provide a community venue to attract visitors of this once neglected portion of downtown Reno. Promote businesses in the area, quality of life for residents. Absolutely, it's become a great community venue for downtown. Arts and outdoor recreation and tourism, it's absolutely become a new venue for arts and cultural events. Not only the music and the experience, but just the vibe, the arts, the artwork, the signs, the shade structures. It's definitely revitalized this area of downtown. Arts and culture, I suggested that the proposed Globe Plaza will provide an attractive venue and platform for local and regional artists. Absolutely, the Phil Harmonic was there. I mean, how local is that? And urban revitalization, I suggested that the Globe Plaza would be consistent with the efforts to revitalize downtown Reno, which is providing a safe, accessible venue for the arts, which absolutely contributes to the urban core. And I won't go through all these, but tourism and entertainment checks that box, art and culture, public spaces. You can see a lot of these events were just open. They didn't even require a ticket. They were free for families to come and enjoy the space, enjoy the area, enjoy the food, and really have a great experience in our downtown urban core where we're trying to bring residents back downtown. Pedestrian realm, we've done a great job with urban elements, sidewalks, lighting, signage to provide really a great, a location that used to be very lighted. And community amenities, absolutely. And this is directly from your downtown action plan, which, as you all know, was created with input from the entire Reno community. And on the right, you can see the words that most Reno locals focused on of what do we want to do with downtown? We want vibrant, safe, clean, fun, arts, events, culture, community. And I think we've checked all those boxes as well. I think where we are today is unbelievable, where we're headed next year. And you'll hear the second from Mr. Bullware specifically what's going on next year, I think is very exciting. But I think we've hit the head on the downtown action plan of what the community wanted for our downtown. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Bullware. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Oops. Okay. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, City Councilmembers. Congratulations to those who've won your races. My name's Jonathan Bullware. I'm the Vice President of Nevada Operations for Jacobs Entertainment. And I am so excited to be here today to talk about our expansion plan. Some of you may have seen the article today in the RGJ about the $130 million investment and our partnership with JMF Presents. So I'm going to take you through some of the exciting news that we have. What you're seeing here today is our front entrance. It's right on the corner of 4th Street and Ralston. Every great property needs a sense of arrival. And this is our opportunity to provide it to our guests. And what you see obviously is additional parking, 25th Sculpture, which will be our 14th on 4th Street. And once you walk inside the building, you'll have a beautiful entrance. On display will be four of Jacobs' collections of European sports cars, some of the most unique cars in the world. Will be there, four of them in that location. You'll hear more about that in a minute. We'll have a little bit more gaming, F and B option. But this really completes the front entrance. So if you drive by there right now, you don't specifically have that experience. But this will definitely round that out. We'll begin this construction January of 2025 and expect it to complete early in 2026. This is another picture of the front entryway. This is what we call the West Expansion. This is what we're real excited about. This is still in pre-development. But right now, the pool for J Resort is in the front entrance on 4th Street in Ralston. We plan to move that pool to this location and it become an indoor-outdoor pool. We like to be able, to be, in our view, to be a true resort, we need to have a 24-hour pool operation. So this gave us the opportunity to have an indoor-outdoor pool. For those of you that are familiar with the property, when you enter the property through the Afterglow entrance, that is that parking lot in that location. Underneath the pool, well, I'm sorry, the pool, the spa, new workout facility. Underneath that, we'll have another, well, 800 seat banquet space. We could probably use a flex space as well, too. So again, this was in pre-development. We're really excited about this as another opportunity to round out the J Resort. This is what we're excited about as well. This is part of the Jacobs Collection European, Jacobs Collection of European Sports Cars. Some of the most unique cars in the world are going to be on display, 15 and 16. And you'll see a picture in a minute, it's going to be the pre-function space or a new banquet space that we're going to be adding. We wanted to create banquet space as our first step, but we wanted to do something that was going to be extremely unique, someplace that you can't find anywhere else, hopefully in the United States, certainly not in Nevada. And so our guests will have an opportunity to enjoy this pre-function space, which in total will include five Ferrari supercars. Sure, I haven't seen a supercar before, but they're only very limited in the world. So we will have that on display. And then this, that is the pre-function space for this banquet space, will seat about 400 plus people. And as we announced this morning, we entered a five-year partnership with JMF Presents. And Chris Sewell is here today. This will be our J Resort Festival Ground. And this allows us to expand beyond Globe Plaza. Globe Plaza was very successful. Want to talk about, I want to follow up with Gordon in a minute. But this gives us the opportunity to attract even larger groups, larger folks to come down and experience this festival ground. We'll be able to host 10,000, 15,000 people. And we did a little test run this year. Sophie Tucker was in that same location before this remodel. And it was about 3,000 or 4,000 people and it was highly, highly successful. So this will begin construction soon and we want to have it open by May of 2025. So one of the things we talked about with entertainment, and Gordon talked about the activation, because a lot of times, you know, we talk about the master plan and the changes. And I was part of the company when we first took over our first motel in 2017. And I remind people when I go out and I speak about the company and I get the questions of, you know, hey, the master plan and buildings and what are you guys doing? And I remind people that this was an area that we all know, that people avoided for decades, for decades, that people would not come to this area for all the reasons that we know. And so to be able to take an area where now we have families and kids and seniors and all sorts of people coming down to an area that they haven't been down in years, that they haven't seen in years. That's a part of the revitalization, too. That is a part of the master plan that doesn't get talked about, is rebranding an area that people would not step foot on, step foot for decades and decades. And I think that's important for Reno. I think that's an important accomplishment. Of all the things that we've done as a company, one of the greatest things that I'm most proud of is our rebranding of this area. And I've talked to people and said, you know, I would never come down here without this. I've never brought my family down. I didn't feel safe. And as evidence of that, Pops on the River in 2023 hosted their event at the Globe Plaza in the middle of 4th Street. Who would have thought that would have happened 5, 10 years ago? So I just want to say we're excited about these announcements. We're excited about the future. We're excited about where we're going, where we're heading, and we're just starting. And the last thing I do want to talk about, that's another picture of the festival grounds, is our really first ground-up residential development. 245 North Arlington, beautiful building there on Second and Arlington Street, 60 units. We will start pre-leasing in January of 2025 and will be ready to rent in March of 2025. So it's a beautiful area, beautiful building, and we're almost ready to go. And with that, any questions?
All right, thank you, Mr. Bullware. Great job. Okay, I'm going to start with Councilwoman Ebert. Councilwoman.
Thanks for being here. Great update.
Councilwoman Reese.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Gordon and Mr. Bullware. Appreciate the update. Very exciting. I think it really bears out something you said in the presentation, which was there was a vision and the vision has started. And a lot of what the vision was happened last year, so I'm very excited about that. Obviously, the news this morning and the announcement about the expansion is another example of, you know, several hundred million dollar commitment that Mr. Jacobs has made in this community. And I think sometimes it doesn't get a lot of credit for the work that's happened here and some of the things that have happened that have allowed this community to move forward. In part because people want everything to happen very quickly. And when things don't happen quickly, they imagine they're not happening at all. But I think your presentation tells me that lots of good things are happening, so I'm very excited about it. I also think, you know, when anyone is willing to commit $500 million to a billion dollars to invest in this community, we should be celebrating that, right? The city of Reno is a great place to live, work, and play. And it's changed, certainly in my lifetime, it's changed. And one of the things that happens is when people make those commitments, whether it's the Corona family and Caesar's Entertainment's commitments, whether it's Jacobs Entertainment, whether the GSR and Alex Morello, those kind of long-term investments to this community are incredible. And not every community has the opportunity to get those investments. So when I see that kind of growth trajectory, I just want to say thank you to the folks who are making those investments and those commitments to this community. So Mr. Jacobs, I'm sure will hear back. And certainly, Mr. Jacobs Jr., I suppose we haven't had the privilege of meeting yet, is here. But it's exciting. And really, it does speak to this community's trajectory, which I think is quite incredible. I'll be interested to know who the lineup is this year in some of the Glow Festival or Glow Plaza grounds. I had the privilege of attending at least three of the night markets. They turned out to be one of the things that I really enjoyed about Reno. The promoters for that have really done a good job of creating opportunity for local vendors, craftspeople, different food vendors. This is a great vibe at those night markets. And so if you haven't been to a night market, I encourage you to do that. And certainly I'm looking forward to what you'll be bringing to the table this year.
Hi, Smear. Thank you. I appreciate the update. I'm grateful for the investment in downtown. It makes a big difference. And I look forward, I'm very excited about 245 North Arlington opening. That's very exciting. And I appreciate that you're a good neighbor to other residents downtown when it comes to noise and the activities that you offer. So, thank you.
Councilwoman Martinez. All right, Councilwoman Anderson. No, okay. First of all, thank you. Great presentation. When are you going to get a pool? When is that happening? Well, no, but the indoor/outdoor, like in all that, that whole expansion, when is that? Oh, okay.
I'm still in the design right now, but we have the pool on the outdoors, but that one, yeah, we're really excited about. Don't have a timeline on that one just yet.
And then the convention space, too, because I know that that's a big amenity as well.
Absolutely, yes. Like I said, we're not done yet. This is just, this is just the beginning.
But I do want to point out, first of all, thank you. And I just, you know, thinking back about all, you know, sort of where this all started. And I remember sitting down with Mr. Jacobs a few years ago and he was sort of saying, you know, I really want to put arts and culture into the city. And, you know, I've had a lot of people that tell me that and that it has never come to fruition. And to see what he has accomplished has been really miraculous. There's a lot of people that say to me, wow, I never would have went to 4th Street. Now I can ride my bike. There's a lot of people that ride their bike thanks to RTC and what they've done over there, but also the nostalgia and the venue and opportunity for local artists, arts and culture. And the thing that is impressive is that he's sort of sharing it with everyone. I think people forget that. It's all along that street, Burning Man. A lot of people have said to me, you know, I would never go to Burning Man, but the fact that I get to experience it on this small scale is pretty impressive. And it makes them say, oh, I want to go to Burning Man. Or there are a lot of people that are disabled or they're elderly and they appreciate the art. And so I hear a lot of things like that and not to mention the safety. One of the things that I'm going to touch upon because it's been, you know, so I think it's been unfairly negative on a lot of ways. And you should be commended because what we aren't talking about, the building that you just showed, was one of the most horrific, deplorable places I have ever seen in my entire life. And that was the Town House. It was unbelievable. And I had been in many, and I will gladly debate anyone any single day on this issue, but I had been in a lot of those motels on 4th Street. Unfortunately, my brother had a problem with drugs and addiction, so I knew them very well because he would go missing and we would look for him in those places. I knew them very well, unfortunately. So the fact that that is cleaned up, and if anyone ever wants to debate me on that housing aspect, absolutely not, absolutely not. Hundreds and thousands of bedbugs, mold, no running water, you could rent them by the hour. High, high, high rates of crime, highest. That is not a place that anyone should live. And not to mention, we allowed a lot of slum lords to get away with that for a very long time. So if there's anyone that should be mad at anyone, it's they should be mad at those people that let people live like that for a very long time. And as you know, and their records speak for themselves, I followed it closely. I would say 95% of those people were relocated. There was one side of the story that was told. But it was very stark to me today whenever you showed that new building in the Town House where people were murdered and horrific crimes happened. And it's a beautiful new building today. And not to mention the contributions I've seen that Mr. Jacobs has done in this community that no one really talks about, but I know them firsthand. Massive amounts of monies to incredible nonprofits, incredible, like homeless youth. And, yeah, the Willie Win, so many. And so I don't know why it's been so negative for someone to revitalize a city and make it beautiful. So I want to apologize. This update was fantastic and we appreciate the investment into our community. And, you know, anyone that wants to do it, not just Mr. Jacobs, I don't care who you are. I want our city to have amenities like these and opportunities for artists. And when you, maybe who knows, some young, you know, little boy sees an act there and says, one day I want to become, you know, the next, I don't know, Bone Thugs-N-Harmony? I was going to go like Paul McCartney, I don't know. But, you know, those kinds of things, and a lot of them are free. And I want people in our community to have good amenities and a strong arts and culture scene and something that we can be proud of. So, anyway, I just wanted to say thank you, but it really triggered something with me whenever I saw that you put up that last slide because the Town House was awful, 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 awful.
We were there when we did the press conference.
Yeah. But I had spent probably three or four years regularly, so unfortunately, but thank you very much. Okay, that being said, I don't know if we have to, Angela, do we have to accept this?
If you'd just like to accept the report, that would be one motion.
Okay, I guess we would like to accept the report. Do we have to make a motion?
I move to accept the report.
I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on. We are going to open the RDA. There it is. Okay, great. Madam Clerk, I'm going to send it to you for roll call.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, calling roll for the redevelopment agency board on Wednesday, November 20th. Councilmember Taylor.
Here.
Duer.
Here.
Martinez.
Here.
Ebert.
Here.
Reese. Anderson.
Here.
Shevy.
Here.
Madam Mayor, you do have a quorum of the redevelopment agency board. Madam Mayor, you do have a quorum of the redevelopment agency board.
Okay. Thank you so much. Any public comment?
I just read my disclosure. Members of the public may hear, observe, and provide public comment virtually by registering through the following link, which can be found on Reno.gov/Meetings. HTTPS colon forward slash forward slash L I N K S period R E N O period G O V forward slash C O U N C I L one one hyphen two zero. Madam Mayor, we do not have any public comment registered at this time and have not received any correspondence.
Okay, thank you so much. At this time, may I get approval of the agenda? I have a motion.
Second.
Of the second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. All right, may I get approval of the minutes? I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. All right. Madam Clerk, I'm going to send it back to you. I believe, are we going into item what?
Madam Mayor, we're on item D three on the regular agenda and item RDA C one, which we're opening together.
Perfect. Mayor, unless there is a desired presentation, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Go right ahead.
I'll move to approve the amended investment policy for the city of Reno and redevelopment agency of the city of Reno.
All right, thank you. I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor?
No.
You require.
Do you have a question, maybe, of our staff?
I just thought it would be helpful that presentation, but okay.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed.
Sorry, Madam Mayor, who is the seconder?
Um, Councilman Martinez.
No.
Stewart.
Councilwoman Duer.
Oh, Stewart. Okay, thank you.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Motion carries. Okay.
Okay, we're on RDA item C two, which is an advisory board bylaw update.
Okay, do you have any public comment on this item?
We do not have any public comment on this item.
Okay. All right. Mr. McCartel.
Good afternoon. Ryan McCartel, Revitalization Manager. I'm here to present the amended bylaws, the resolution for the amended bylaws for the Redevelopment Agency Advisory Board, otherwise known as the RAB. I'm going to go through a couple of slides to refresh of what was discussed last time and the proposed amendments. What we have before you today is actually the resolution to adopt formally those new bylaws. So and then in the redevelopment plan that created the redevelopment agency, essentially, three activities of the redevelopment agency agency were defined. The agency may create plans, studies, projects, and programs for each individual redevelopment area. And that on an annual basis, there shall be a list of projects or a capital improvement plan based on that. And then the agency will constitute an advisory group, which may consist of area residents, property owners, business owners, and other interested citizens. And that was in the original plan. The role of the RAB is defined, it's very limited. It is to provide an assessment of the proposed projects, provide their view on any opportunities to that comes before this this board, the Redevelopment Advisory Board or Redevelopment Agency Board. And then review and comment on any other matters that we feel that the Redevelopment Advisory Board needs to comment on. But in essence, the the RAB is a nonbinding, they make nonbinding recommendations, they hold no executive power or decision makers, they just provide advisory input. So in nineteen eighty seven, the RAB originally started out as a plan review committee when they were drafting that original agency document. They kept it around, updated to two thousand or updated to thirteen members in two thousand thirteen. And they also changed the name to the CAC, the Community Advisory or Citizen Advisory Committee. But we also, it created some confusion with the actual CAC, the Community Citizen Center. And so they changed the name to the RAB. And then in March two thousand ten, they they decreased the number of members to nine members on that board. As we brought last time, that was approved by this this body were the proposed amendments that were going to be added to the bylaws. And so the final bylaws are in your staff report as written out. So it's a complete new set of bylaws with these amendments included in there. It's just changes to open meeting law so that the the RAB doesn't have to meet specifically on Tuesdays at three P M. It can meet as the chair decides, as long as it's publicly posted with Nevada Open Meeting Law. How the chair and vice chair selected, remote attendance was added, defining excused absences. Now, any future bylaw changes have to come back before this board for final approval. The chairperson, because it is a small advisory board in nature, the chairperson may make motions, cannot release press releases until they get the city manager's approval. And the real change are the last two is that modify the advisory board to make up, make up to include those with professional services. So we put some effort in here. We heard comments from this body at the last last time this was discussed. And so the language in this is that, and I'll read this just so we're clear, is that going forward, the RAB shall include at least one representative from each designated redevelopment area, area one, area two. Sorry, let me reread that. Shall include at least one representative from each designated redevelopment area, providing direct insights from those impacted by redevelopment areas. So there's a representative from area one and area two that can comment and provide input on anything that may impact or change those redevelopment areas. The remaining members may be residents, property owners, business owners within the redevelopment areas, or individuals with professional experience in fields relevant to redevelopment, including but not limited to transportation, urban planning, architecture, landscape architecture, public finance, commercial real estate, historic preservation, arts and culture, economic development, and redevelopment. So including but not limited to is how that language is written. And so we could have a mix of of members on that board. As long as we have two representatives from each area, there could be a mix of people with commercial real estate experience or economic development experience, et cetera. And the terms of office changed since we're restarting this, we had to create a staggered term. And so if we select nine new members, three of those will start off with two year terms, three will start off with three, three year terms, and the remainder will start off on four, four year, four year terms. After they do their first year, they can do another three year term. The last one is we've added a conflict of interest policy that everyone will have to disclose any conflicts of interest and recuse themselves from voting where a conflict exists, where a conflict exists. And they must disclose or and sign a disclosure form at the beginning of their participation on this rap. So those are the general amendments. They've been written in final form that are in the staff report in front of you. And just to highlight the the timeline to get all this started. And so if this is approved today, the applications will go live tomorrow for people who are interested in being on this board. December fourth, this body selects liaisons to all boards and commissions. So the council liaison will be identified at that time. At the January eighth council meeting or redevelopment agency meeting, the appointed members will be selected. And then in January and February, I imagine the first RAB meeting will take place, at which point they will select a chair and a vice chair. So the recommended motion is to adopt the resolution, amending the bylaws of the Redevelopment Agency Advisory Board.
Thank you so much. Okay, I'm gonna start from my left. Councilwoman Ebert, go ahead.
Hi, can you please go over again what the positions, what requirements are to be appointed to the the board again?
Yep, said any residents or individuals with professional experience in the fields relevant to redevelopment. That's general. It says, including but not limited to transportation, urban planning, architecture, landscape architecture, public finance, commercial real estate, historic preservation, arts and culture, economic development, and redevelopment.
So does that mean somebody can't be appointed to it if they're not in any of those fields?
It would say, including but not limited to. So it's not limited to this list, but if someone does have skills relevant to redevelopment, they could be considered. It's a bit ambiguous.
Like a retired school teacher, could they not be appointed?
They would have to demonstrate that they have a passion, that they have the skills to bring forward to that advisory board that could be relevant to the discussions.
Okay, what kind of skills would they need?
Experiences on other committees, experiences with real estate, providing impacts, et cetera. They they may have sat on another board in another capacity. I don't know. Regardless of their their main employment, they may have experienced from other areas.
Okay.
Hey, go ahead, Councilwoman Duer.
Yeah, sure. I have a couple of recommendations and a couple of questions. I'll start by following up on Councilmember Ebert's. I read this to say board composition. Members may be residents, property owners, or business owners within the redevelopment area. And then it says, or individuals with these experiences. So I it seemed to be that you could be a resident, property owner, or business owner within the area, or you could be an individual, maybe that doesn't live in the area. Is that correct with one of these experiences? I don't know if that's what you meant, but that's how I'm reading it.
I would say that this is written as, or any individual with professional experience.
Yeah. So I mean, could you be a resident, could you be a property owner in the district without these? To to Ms. Ebert's comment, a school teacher, could you be a property owner in the district who you happen to be a school teacher, but you could serve on this board? It's just, it's written a little bit confusing.
They are, if they are representing, if they are the representative from that area, then yes, they would be eligible.
Okay. So but you could have multiple people that would be a representative of the area. What I was getting confused about is do the professionals have to live in that area? The way it was written.
They do not, unless they are fulfilling that role of the representative from each area.
Okay, so your expectations are just be two, one from each area, and then everybody else would be a somebody else?
Yes.
But but could you have two representatives of the area?
Of course, you could have.
All of them.
Yes, every single seat could be someone who lives, owns property, or is a resident.
All right, I don't know what your intent is, but the way it reads is it sounds like the first category, residents, property owners, or business owners. All you have to do is be within the redevelopment area. Or you could be an individual with a variety of professional experiences. I I don't know what you intended, but that's how I'm reading it. But I'm going to move on in the interest of time. So I'm going to start from the end, and I think you'll probably agree with all these recommendations. I don't know. At the end, at number five, it talks about amendments to the bylaws. And the way that it's written now, it could only, the bylaws could only be amended by the RAB itself. And I would recommend, just like the council's doing now, we're approving the bylaws. I I think you should add the council in because it it may be something that the council wants to change, but the RAB, they don't care, yes, no. So I think you should still allow the council to amend the bylaws.
That is, it is written that way. All amendments must be submitted to the Redevelopment Agency Board, which is this body, for review and final approval before taking effect.
Right, but that is, we review what the RAB did. We don't, we couldn't initiate amendment. I think we should be able to.
Madam Mayor, if I could answer about the intent, Ashley, Attorney Assistant City Manager, for the record, this model is the language that you'll find in most all of your other boards and commissions, Councilmember. And so the intent behind this is that process is the board bring forward their recommendations to this body for final approval. So at the end of the day, because you create it, you have the opportunity to approve it or change it.
Okay, but I just think it should be clear in here that the council, the redevelopment board, the council could initiate an amendment to the bylaws without the RAB deciding that's a good idea or not.
I think because you already have the ability to do that at all times.
I understand. I'm just recommending for clarity that we include it in the final version of these. I have two more changes too that I think would help. And I can wait for round two, Madam Mayor, since.
Yeah, thank you. Councilman Reese.
Thank you so much. Mr. McCartel, can we go back to the timeline? I just want to make sure I'm tracking. I think everything that's been drafted and crafted is fine. I think we certainly all understand what the role of the RAB is and also what our role is. And so those things being what they are, I think whoever the council liaison that is selected will put good people on that will have some oversight by you all to make sure they aren't loading them all up in one area, but not the other. That it could be a teacher if that person exhibits some specialized knowledge and skill that allows them to be contributing to it. I think what it goes back to for me is that this is not like some of the other boards in our city. Like if you're on Urban Forestry, I do think it's cool if you have a horticultural background, but you don't have to, right? I think someone could be very valuable on such a board, and they would exhibit their value by, perhaps they've owned a nursery, so they're a business person. Similarly, on this body, on this board, the reason why I see there being a difference is because we're asking them to essentially look at the technical, financial deal points of RAB related projects. We are not necessarily looking for a broad understanding of those projects. I think that it's much like our financial advisory board. We ask people on the financial advisory board to have a financial background. Right? So I think whoever the council liaison wants made will certainly take whatever input of, maybe I, Devin Reese, have a person that I would like to see serve on this body. I will give that to whichever colleague, or maybe perhaps it would be me who would serve as that liaison. And so happy to receive those and and consider those from, hopefully, whoever is appointed would consider them if if we made recommendations. So as to this timeline, what I want to make sure I understand is we have one project that's already come in the door. And we've gone out to Hunn and Partners to evaluate it. I make an assumption that we will have other projects in the door. Does this timeline get us there so that these projects can be fairly and reasonably evaluated? I mean, in this industry and redevelopment space, time is money. And so I want to make sure, this seems rather long to me, but I also know that we have a break in there for some holidays and certain things. So this is what we're stuck with here is this.
Given the timeline of the consultant selected for the Grand Sierra Resort, this timeline will likely fit with their proposed timeline. So the first meeting may, the agenda item might be the review of their analysis.
I see.
That takes us to the next step.
And then as far as certainly our role, you said that they make advice, but it's not binding because we still have to vote for it here at council.
Correct.
Okay, thank you so much.
It would be making recommendations to this body.
Understand, thanks.
All right, Councilwoman Anderson. Nothing. Okay, Councilman Martinez.
Thanks so much, Madam. I just had one quick question. When the individual is appointing whatever members are going to the RAB, for the terms of office, how will we dignify, like who is doing the two year term, the three year term, the four year term? Just trying to get a better clarification on that.
We'll likely select at random. Just randomly, it's.
I'll be assigned that way.
Yep, draws draws. Some of you get two year terms, some of you get three, some of you get four.
Can I ask like what the thought process was behind doing that instead of doing like a four year term for everybody?
Every it should be that every year you are electing at least three people. So your whole entire board doesn't rotate off and rotate back on. Every year you have three seats in rotation. If people continue with their consecutive term, they would just be re-voted in. That way you just don't, typically when you're starting a big board with individuals, you have to start people off in staggered terms.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
Hi, Smear. Nothing? Okay. Back to Councilwoman Ebert.
Yeah, so what, we have this board, and what exactly will they be doing? Just reviewing projects that come in to make kind of recommendations to council? Are they going out and looking for developments to put into these these areas?
So what will likely come before this advisory board is if we have TIF applications that has capital stacks, pro formas, discounted cash flows, streetscape improvements, a five year modeling, their lender agreements, we would bring that before the redevelopment advisory board and say, this is the development proposed. With you all with your experiences, your purview, your knowledge of the subject, do you think this is an application worthy to go before this body for review and approval? That would be the recommendation of the advisory board. So that's one side of it. The other side is when we have a list of capital improvement projects, there is an annual budget. It will be prioritized projects based on budget. So they'll have an opportunity to say, yeah, this is a good budget for the year. We think the projects proposed are the right ones, and we would recommend approval to the redevelopment agency board. And so that would be the the sole function. And then to comment on any other matters that we feel is should go before that body.
Okay, so then would council decide then to use like a consultant, again, like we're doing with the GSR situation? If if the board recommends a development?
Until at time that the redevelopment agency has an underwriter and financial analyst on staff, it's likely. it's likely we will continue to work with consultants to review development projects.
Okay. All right. And so, uh, forgive me if I missed this part. Is it, um, it will only be the council liaison to this board that appoints all of the representatives on the, the board?
The resolutions are silent in that process, but if you follow the process, how other boards and commissions are selected, it would be the council liaison that is, uh, recommending the appointments to this board.
Okay. So we wouldn't all get a representative like we do on the planning commission? It would just be whoever becomes the liaison would be able to pick every representative on this board?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, the fact that it's not a commission, it is truly an advisory board, much like other, um, boards and, and commissions. Unlike the planning engines, uh, planning commission that can make final decisions on things.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, okay. Me? Go right ahead. Okay. Um, so I'm moving on to number four, which is about quorum and voting. And, um, a confusion on almost every board has been, um, this is written that a majority entitled to vote shall constitute a quorum. So let's say you only have eight people of your nine appointed. Does it reduce the quorum? Maybe this is a question for legal counsel, but I thought it should say, uh, that because it's a question on almost every board, we have to reinstitute, reinvestigate this situation. John knows how many times I've had to ask him. So if you could just say in the bylaws that it's a quorum of the members appointed or a majority, it says entitled to vote, but anyway, if it could be a little more clear that it's of those positions that are appointed, it's a majority of those makes the quorum. I think that would help clarity. Because I know it's modeled on all the others, but this is a question in 10 years that's come up on over every commission over and over. So if you could just add clarity, and maybe with John's help.
Yeah, I don't know what clarity to add at the moment, if John.
Yeah, I mean, essentially, I, I think this says it, but we can go to the further step and say that, yeah, majority of the, uh, appointed members of the board.
If you just said that, then it's clear what a quorum is. Okay.
So if there's an empty seat, it doesn't count.
Count against quorum. Okay. I'm just suggesting, just 10 years of experience, these small things can make a big difference. Uh, the other thing is you mentioned excused absence and another big issue that's come up on almost every board. Um, you wrote in here, it, I think you wrote a conflict. On one hand, you said there is such a thing as an excused absence, but then you write, if you have missed three meetings, whether you're excused or unexcused, you're automatically off the board. And most boards have something similar, but usually if you have an excused absence, like, oh, you had COVID, you couldn't attend, you couldn't even be on Zoom maybe, um, it doesn't count against an automatically going off the board. So you may want to say three unexcused absences automatically terminate. So that'd be a suggestion. Okay. And then finally, um, uh, on the membership, almost every board, even very technical boards like Tom Waugh's advisory board, that are all supposed to be water people, they still have, uh, one or two positions that are general public. And I would recommend that we have at least one position. That's, you don't have to have a special, uh, uh, unique specialty, uh, you can just represent the public. And if we could just say that, I mean, that may be your intent of these people that are representing the different areas, but it's, well, my experience is it's good to put it right in the writing, so we're not having to call the lawyers each time to say, does this fit? Does that fit? So I would recommend that you put in, anyway, one member of the general public. And then finally, uh, for the mayor, last time you said, um, what your preference was, was you said you had hoped to be the liaison and you hoped, uh, you wanted to hear from a council. And I know you and I are only here for two years, but this document will far extend past our deadline. So you may want to put in, um, you know, recommendations for six of the roles and you appoint three or something like that. So.
Okay. Thank you so much.
My recommendations.
Councilwoman Taylor.
Oh, Vice Mayor, sorry. I was ready to make a recommended motion.
Okay, go ahead.
I move to the, to adopt the resolution amending the bylaws, bylaws of the redevelopment agency advisory board.
All right. I have a motion and a second.
So question. Um, so I'm, I'm making these suggestions because of 10 years of experience of confusion with these bylaws, which they seem to be continuing these issues. So can we, um, your motion maker, uh, can we have the staff work with the lawyers to address these areas that have been very confusing for 10 years?
I think you guys understand the direction, right, with, with consideration with Jonathan?
Yeah. I mean, you're nodding, but is that?
I would say we would, we would go to, if, if every board is having this challenge and it gets solved on other boards, we would follow practice and
Yeah.
use it on this.
And I don't worry about it because it is advisory. It is not, you know, it's, it's something that comes as an advisory. You can, it's, you know, you can or you can't, whatever. I don't have any problems on my other boards. Um, I don't know about what you guys experienced, so I, I want to be careful about how we, you know, dig in because I, I feel like this isn't one that it, it should be. I don't know.
Mayor, I'm just suggesting that there's been a lot of confusion about voting and what a quorum is. And if we could just say those words, that it's a majority of the members appointed, a small change, it's, it's clear for everyone. And then if we could just say, um, that we too can change the bylaws. I mean, you may want to change them. Are you gonna have to wait 10 weeks and have a meeting of the RAB and look for their recommendations? Or are you gonna, you know, just say, I want to amend this one thing in the bylaw? I mean, these are just practical things and what an excused absence is. I mean, it's been, I'm sorry it hasn't been an issue on yours, but certainly has. Um, I've served on at least six different advisory boards for the city.
How, um, let me ask Ashley, how can you clean up? And she makes one really good point because I'm sitting on a board where this person is not showing up, has not shown up for like the last four or five meetings. And, you know, I think there comes a point where that it should trigger.
Correct. Madam Mayor, Ashley Attorney Assistant City Manager for the record. So part of the language behind this is we did work closely with the attorneys and looked at our other boards and commissions in order to create some consistency. Part of why you see that three excused or unexcused are the fact that we do have some chronic absenteeism with some of our board members, and that impacts our ability to have quorums and to be able to move forward with that decision.
Yeah.
So that's part of why you do see it as
I want it.
Three excused or unexcused.
But I think actually it should be broader than this. I think it should be looked at as a whole, as the, all of the boards and commissions. And one of the things we've talked about, but we should, I, I actually think it's a good idea that we should have the purview to appoint, um, people in the community to sit on some of our boards.
You mean for the, we've talked about this for many, many years. Yes, all of the boards in which council members are appointed as members. Uh, that goes back to your governing language, but that's something staff can look into to see if there's options.
So maybe could you bring it back as a, as a separate item where we can look at them as a whole? Because if they're pertaining to all of them, then that makes sense to me.
Yeah, we can work with the clerks, and she is keeper of boards and commissions, and bring back something for council to.
Okay. Thank you. So I had a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Okay. Thank you so much.
So may I ask a question? I just, I'm a little confused. Are, are you planning to work with the attorney to just fix this phrase? Or what, what are you planning to do? I, maybe from Ashley.
I guess my vision, and I would, maybe you think, maybe you heard it differently, is that you would bring back an agenda item addressing boards and commissions. That way we can give you our feedback, and then you can go implement certain things that we see, like absenteeism, what's a quorum? Some of the things that we experienced that maybe we can change or elaborate on, or, you know, can we appoint people from the public?
So we would take this as two things happened here today. The first one is that your redevelopment agency advisory board bylaws are adopted. So that way we can move forward with getting your application present, so we can get people in front of you to review these projects.
But I see this separately.
Correct. And so to your point, Madam Mayor, um, I received the information that you are looking for a broader conversations on boards and commissions to ensure that we have consistency and a bigger conversation about what are absentee issues? What are the expectations that this body has? And then that's something that, once that conversation happens, we can happily put that as a blanket item and bring back each of the boards as we need to change those.
Perfect.
All right. Councilwoman?
Yeah. I mean, yeah. It's in front of us, so I thought we should fix it right now. I don't want to continue.
Well, there you go. There's a whole item.
I, I heard.
All right. Um, now we are, Madam Clerk, get us back on track.
Sure, Madam Mayor. We're on item F1, which is redevelopment agency board comments from city council members.
All right. I don't think there are any. We just have any.
So there is no closing public comment, so I'm looking for a motion to adjourn the redevelopment agency.
I have a motion from Councilwoman Reese.
Second.
From Council, uh, Vice Mayor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Okay. We're going back to our regular meeting, and we're opening item D4, David 4, E1, E2, and E3.
Okay. Thank you so much. Um, do you have any public comment on this item?
We do not have any public comment on this item, um, and we have not received any correspondence. But on item E1, we do have a public commenter from Mr. Dan Morgan.
All right. Um, and then I also have a disclosure to read. I just want to put that on the record. So we will wait for Mr. Morgan.
So Vicki, are we opening everything for one presentation?
Can we? Okay. So I guess.
So then can we just do public comment from Dan Morgan?
All right. Let's take public comment, and then we'll open it up.
Mr. Morgan. Sorry, I wasn't paying attention. Good afternoon. Nice to see you all, Madam Mayor. New council members, welcome to your first full meeting, uh, Councilwoman Anderson. I just wanted to take a moment and, um, uh, express, for the record, Dan Morgan, Builders Association of Northern Nevada. Wanted to express our gratitude for your consideration and hopefully ultimate approval of the SAD, uh, for the Verdi project. I think SADs are going to play an even more critical role as we go fo- forward unlocking inventory and addressing some of the, um, housing issues that we have throughout the region. So I just wanted to be on the record in support, um, of the passing of the Verdi SAD and let you know how much we appreciate your support. Have a great afternoon.
Mr. Morgan, before you run off, um, last week we were at a presentation that you gave on housing.
Yes.
And you shared some important numbers with the, uh, EDON folks about our housing needs in this region. I wonder if you could share any of those numbers with my colleagues and maybe even follow up with the presentation materials?
I would be happy to give that presentation to this group. Um, and Councilman Reese, thank you, and thank you for being there. Um, I'm gonna do a couple of things off the top of my head. Um, because I, I got it buried in my phone someplace, but there's, there's roughly 30,000 housing units throughout the region. And, and I caution you, throughout the region, at some various state of approval. Um, it could be at the tentative map stage, it could be the final map stage, it could be Winnemucca Ranch is included in that number. Um, a lot of the listener property in the North Valleys is included as well. One of the greatest hurdles and challenges we have to unlocking that land is infrastructure cost. And that could be water, sewer, roads, everything. And there is such, um, I, I, I talked quite a bit about the Keynesian economic theory. And when you have such high demand, when demand outpaces supply, obviously prices go up, and that's one of the things. So we're really working hard in partnership with EDON and some other groups to find different ways that we can help, meaning the Builders Association, unlock some of that inventory, unlock some of that land. But a- as we all know, it's horrifically expensive. And in today's interest rate environment and the cost, a couple hundred basis points, uh, savings on the cost to borrow the money or to get the funds to initially construct, and it's paid back over time, is significant, and it could have great impact whether on a renter, a ham, a homeowner, i- it has a great impact. So the, Councilman Reese, thank you again. Those numbers are off the top of my head, uh, for the regional pipeline, uh, as we talked about. And I would be more than happy to give that presentation to this body. Anybody else have any questions?
No, but I appreciate all the work that you're doing.
Well, you know, we live in a great community, um, and a lot of us have been here for a very, very long time, all of our lives. And we've seen it grow. And the one other comment I will say about this region, if you go back and look, and I had the benefit of working on the majority of them, we have some of the greatest master plan communities and residential developments, I think, in the country. Whether it's Collin Ranch, Damani Ranch, Wingfield Springs, Somerset. We have done it very, very well throughout this region, and I, I remind everybody of that because the majority of those projects also had SADs on them, and they performed very well. So appreciate your help and support, and, uh, Councilman, anytime you want me back to give that presentation, I'll be here.
Yeah, that would be great, actually.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Likewise. Thank you so much.
Madam Clerk, may I ask a question? I, I want to just make sure I understand, as the ward five representative, E1, E2, and E3 will be opened with D4?
You can really just open the first one, and then if you approve that one, then we could open the other three and move forward.
And that was.
They, they're all kind of joined, but I brought them all at the same time just for continuity. So you'd have the, they're all related. It all is the same development. It's just the process to move them forward.
Well, Ms. Van Buren, I'm happy to have had them opened all together, but I want to make sure that when we get to any of the ordinances.
They will all be adopted individually.
Read.
Correct.
Okay. So you'll keep us on track, Madam Clerk?
Yes, I will.
Thank you.
Yeah. Great. Um, hold on. One thing I do want to do, then I guess I would like to make a disclosure. Um, do I have to open the public hearing before I do that?
No.
No. Okay. So, and Mr. Shipman just, um, let me know. I would like to make this disclosure then for item D4, E1, E2, and E3. Correct. Okay. All right. Um, fellow city council members and Madam Clerk, this item involves Josh Hicks, an attorney from McDonald Carano, who represents Toll Brothers in this matter. In my private life, I have retained Adam Hosmer Henner, a partner at McDonald Carano to represent me on a civil matter unrelated to this item pertaining to a GPS tracker found on my car. I have sought guidance from the city attorney's office. As a client of McDonald Carano, I have been advised that I may have a commitment in a private capacity to the interests of McDonald Carano pursuant to NRS 281A dot zero six five five. For the record, any action that I may take on this item would not be reasonably affected by my client relationship with McDonald Carano. McDonald Carano is a very large law firm. This item has nothing to do with my civil case. I have no facts, information, or reason to believe that any action I take today on this item will have any impact on me or McDonald Carano. Given that this is not a clear case where the independence of judgment of a reasonable person in my situation would be materially affected by my commitment in a private capacity to the interests of McDonald Carano, abstention is not required. The fact that I am represented by McDonald Carano in an unrelated civil matter will not impact my ability to impartially review and render a decision upon this item. Madam Clerk, please accept this disclosure and put it on the record for this meeting pertaining to this agenda item. Thank you very much. Okay. All right.
So, good afternoon.
Take it away.
Vicki Van Buren, Director of Finance.
Oh, wait, hold on. I now have to open the public hearing. Madam Clerk, was proper notice given? Any correspondence received?
Madam Mayor, uh, proper notice was given on, is this a public hearing item?
It says it is under right here. Anyway.
No correspondence was received.
Okay, perfect. All right. Take it away. You just got extra, um, proceed, procedural.
Yeah, Vicki Van Buren, Director of Finance. I'm here before you again with, uh, the item concerning the formation of a special assessment district, which is Quilsey Ranch. It's a petition by Toll North, the developer, and Josh Hicks is here. He represents the developer. He will be giving a brief presentation following just the introductory slides that I'm going to give you. I'm just going to give you a little bit of background, how we got here, um, and what this is all about. This aligns with the strategic plan through economic and community development. And this request is for a special assessment district. It's again by Toll North Reno. It proposes the formation of a district to finance the water infrastructure for this project. The project includes about 1,200 residential units, and the estimated cost of the water infrastructure is about $39.6 million. The bond request that's being requested, uh, by the developer is $26.1 million because they can only request the portion that applies to the district itself. Any oversizing or anything that they have to do in addition to that area would not be included. It would only include the portion that applies to the properties within this assessment district. The annual assessment is approximately about $1,400 per homeowner per year, and it would be based on a 30-year bond. And so how this works is we issue a bond, the developer puts in the infrastructure, then they request reimbursement from the city, and then and then we reimburse them with the bond proceeds, and then we pay that bond back over the thirty years. So the residents that end up purchasing these homes will be paying for that infrastructure as, you know, as they live in the home and it goes in the future. The benefit to it is the money's a lot cheaper, as, uh, was mentioned in public comment. It allows the builder to be able to, um, provide those homes at a more reasonable rate for the homeowners because they're not borrowing all of that money upfront to provide infrastructure that they in turn will not eventually own. In this case, the infrastructure, this water infrastructure will be owned by, uh, Tamwa. So what the item before you today is, D four is actual a resolution to move forward with the district, to create that district, and then also to approve the development and financing agreement. The last time we were here at council with this was last December, and council gave us direction to go ahead and move forward with the development and financing agreement. What that is, is it determines how the developer is going to put in, put in the infrastructure and at what points they would be able to request reimbursement. In this case, it was a little trickier because we won't actually have the infrastructure like streets or roads or things. The infrastructure is going to be owned by Tamwa since this is water infrastructure. And so, uh, we had lots of conversations back and forth on how that would look. So as they put in certain sections of it, and they're able to apply to Tamwa to have them come out, inspect it, accept it as their inventory, at that point, then they would be able to apply to us to get the bond proceeds back and reimbursement as they put that in. So it made it a little trickier to do, but that's what D one is on this item, is really the resolution to keep moving forward and then also to approve that development and financing agreement that lists out those terms. The next steps would, which are the E one, two, and three items are the creation ordinance, so that creates that district with those properties in it. The assessment ordinance, which assigns the assessments to the properties, and then the bond ordinance to move forward with issuing the bond. So this would be the first reading of all three of those. We could have brought those back at a different meeting, but I thought it would be really nice to bring them to the same meeting because if you want to move forward with the development and financing agreement today, then these are the next steps anyway. And so we could just have the conversation at the same time. That's the way you want to move, we can go ahead and, and get that going. So with that, I'm going to stop and let, um, Josh Hicks is going to do his presentation, it's a very similar to what he gave before, but it really has all the nice pictures in it, so.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of the council, Josh Hicks with McDonald Carano. It's, uh, my honor to be here today representing Toll Brothers. Uh, Julie Wong, Land Development Director, is here as well from Toll Brothers. Um, I also want to make sure I thank Vicki and Scott for, um, all the time and effort we've been spending going, going through the exciting world of, uh, financing water infrastructure. This is a similar presentation for those of you who were on council, uh, last year that you saw, but we've updated a few things. This is a little bit of background, Toll Brothers itself, um, has a long, um, storied history in our community. Uh, over fifty years of home building throughout the country and half the country. Uh, three thousand seven hundred and forty-one homes and counting in forty-two different communities throughout Washoe County. Uh, so a builder that's, that's very much, uh, been here and, uh, is going to be here. Uh, this graphic just gives you a little shot of the entryway into the project. Uh, this is looking roughly north, that's Peabody Mountain in the background. Uh, and that's Garson Road, which, uh, you might remember was a dirt road, now it's getting paved, the roundabout. Uh, you can see Boomtown, Cabela's kind of up in the left corner and Boomtown's in that center uh, of the picture. So that's, that's the entryway to, uh, the Quillsey project. Just a couple of slides to show you the kind of quality of homes that you see from Toll Brothers. Uh, obviously a high-quality builder, some nice-looking homes. This just gives you a shot, a map of what the actual project looks like, there's multiple villages there. Uh, you can see Interstate eighty kind of going west-east at the top and then north-south at the bottom. Um, that's kind of where it curves after it gets past, um, Cabela's out there. So you can see multiple villages, um, and you can see, um, a multifamily amenities site that's planned, a school site that's planned, uh, and a neighborhood park and a regional park. So, uh, this project went through the tentative map, um, phase back in twenty twenty-one. Um, and then we've been before you twice on matters related to the special assessment district, the deposit agreement and the approval of the application, and, and thank you for your support and, and help on those, um, issues. So just a little context before we get into the water infrastructure itself. Uh, this is about a twelve, just over twelve hundred residential units. Uh, quite a bit of open space, fifty-six percent of the site. Uh, like I said, there's community and, and neighborhood parks, a school site. Uh, there's also, uh, an obligation to pay, uh, a per-door fee for fire and a per-door fee to the community foundation, as well as some money for roadway safety improvements in Verdi that are, that are really needed. Uh, this picture just gives you a, a, a shot of what the water improvements look like. And like Vicki said, these will all be publicly owned, uh, this will be publicly owned infrastructure by Tamwa. Uh, what we're talking about here being financed is off-site. So you can see the Quillsey project in the red stripes there. And then you can see, um, what's labeled OS, um, one through nine, I think it is. Uh, kind of show the different projects, so it's water lines, it's water tanks, and they're all off-site, they kind of run along this, uh, Interstate eighty. And it's important to note that, um, this doesn't just service the Quillsey project, it will allow, it will service other projects too, out there. So this is, um, part of Tamwa's, um, regional planning for backbone infrastructure out there, uh, to get water out in, into the Verdi area. So, uh, as the first one out of the gate, Toll Brothers, um, is responsible for building this, uh, and then others will be, uh, beneficiaries of it as we go down the road. Uh, this is just a blow-up of the east side. Uh, you can kind of see, uh, there's a water tank, few water mains, um, and a booster station that go in various places. And this is the west side, so this is, uh, a little bit closer to the Quillsey project, which is at the bottom of the screen there. Uh, and you can see up at the top, that's on the, uh, Mortenson Ranch property, there's a water tank and a, a line up there as well, as well as a few other little things along, um, Highway forty. This is the home construction schedule, so you know where things are. Um, it's an active site out there right now, so as you saw, uh, roundabouts are in, paving's going in, grading's going in, water's already being built. Uh, so, uh, happy to announce that, uh, home construction is not far away. May twenty twenty-five, uh, is when Village Eight and Village Seven C will start construction. Uh, we'll see homes being built or completed and, and ready, um, in spring of twenty twenty-eight. Uh, you can see the final, um, final construction is Village Eleven, that's in November twenty twenty-nine, so the project will be built out uh, by twenty thirty-one in the summer. Uh, this is just a, a chart to show you kind of what the, the costs are for the water construction. Uh, this is kind of for the whole thing, so when you see the thirty nine point six million dollar, uh, that's, that's the cost of doing all the water. Now, obviously Vicki said, not all of that is part of the special assessment district, a portion of it is, but it shows you, um, just the cost and the, the seven different projects that are being, uh, put into place. And I, I should say before I skip that, you can also see that a lot of these, um, a lot of these projects have already begun construction and some are even complete. So the water infrastructure has been getting installed as we go. Uh, this is the cost allocation, Vicki mentioned this too, you know, there are, uh, there's the Quillsey share, which is the twenty one point seven million, that's the piece that we're talking about for this special assessment district. Neighboring properties that will be beneficiaries of this water infrastructure, uh, when they tie into it, they have an obligation under a Tamwa annexation agreement to participate for their shares. So that's where you see, uh, the BT South share is what it's called on there, and the Mortenson Ranch share. And Tamwa, um, has some responsibility under this as well. So that gets you all up to that thirty nine point six million dollars. Uh, this chart just shows you, uh, really how the bond, uh, proceeds work, this, these are estimates, but, uh, I think it's helpful for you. You can see the bond amount is about twenty five point seven million. Um, there's some deductions for capitalized interest, the reserve fund is very important, uh, that's a requirement. That's in case there's any issues, um, with property owners down the road missing assessments. Uh, that reserve fund is designed to, uh, protect the bondholders. So, um, there will be, um, a, a healthy reserve fund on this. Um, at the end of the day, you get the construction proceeds, uh, of twenty one point four million dollars, that's the money that goes actually to building out the water infrastructure. So what does it all mean for a homeowner? Uh, that's what this chart is designed to do, you heard Vicki also talk about. Uh, if this water infrastructure is built without any kind of bonding, uh, it's more expensive, the interest rates are higher, that gets passed on to the homeowners and they need to end up paying it. So, uh, we put this chart together to just show you the difference, kind of using estimates on what construction loan interests are and home loan interests are, uh, and the SAD loans, which are, which are much lower interest. Uh, and at the end of the day, uh, it saves a homeowner around, an average homeowner around fifteen thousand three hundred and five dollars by going through the SAD process. So just a couple other things about SADs, and you heard, uh, Mr. Morgan talk about some of these. Uh, SADs are mentioned in the master plan. Uh, the use of SADs is encouraged, they're a great tool, uh, to, to get publicly owned infrastructure built out, um, and into these areas that really need it. So, uh, there is consistency with the master plan, especially in areas that don't have infrastructure like Verdi with this water. Uh, you can see here, it's again mentioned again in TIF of the master plan. You know, looking at flexibility and available tools for funding infrastructure, so that's exactly what an SAD does. Uh, the SAD guidelines, uh, this is something we've worked with Vicki quite a bit and Scott, to make sure we were meeting all these. There's always a requirement that an appraisal comes in and it has plenty of value over what the loan amounts are. Uh, we're, there's a draft appraisal being worked on, I'm happy to tell you that the, the, the amounts far exceed the SAD guidelines for the city of Reno. So, uh, those will be set, the reserve fund, like I mentioned, will be on there, the city doesn't have to pledge its general fund. Uh, this is all backed by the land itself. And at the end of the day, these are, uh, all the water improvements go over to Tamwa and become publicly owned. Uh, legislative intent, uh, I just put this slide on here because I just think it's important to note, uh, these special assessment districts are not new, they've been around since nineteen eighty-nine. Uh, they're widely used in a lot of parts of the state, especially in Southern Nevada, and, uh, they're encouraged to, um, help build out this publicly owned infrastructure. Uh, this is just a note, like I mentioned, um, Tamwa's Water Resource Plan contemplates going out to Verdi, so this SAD, um, helps get that financed and help gets that built out. Uh, Edon was kind enough to give us a letter of support, uh, we really appreciate that. Um, they also note that using these special assessment districts is a great tool for the city. Uh, local businesses, uh, obviously right out by Boomtown, uh, very much appreciate that they are looking forward to this too. Uh, obviously they're very excited about having some, um, new people out there to, uh, new customers and new people to, to reach out to. Uh, and with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. That's the conclusion of my presentation.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay, I'm going to bring it back to this body, Councilwoman Ebert.
I don't really have any questions, I just wanted to say that I think this is, um, going to be a good way to, to bring infrastructure out to that area and, um, a useful way to do that so that the city or Tamwa's not having to pay for all of it. So I just think it's, sounds like a good project.
Alright, thanks, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Ebert?
Um, do I have questions?
No, thank you. Okay. Councilman Reese?
Thank you so much, Mr. Hicks, thank you for the presentation. I think the real question I want, if you want to come back up, sorry.
Sure.
Um, so you have become, I think, regionally and perhaps statewide, an expert in the use of SADs. So over the lifetime of their use and, and certainly in Northern Nevada, I think I have often come to you as a person to ask questions about. And maybe three years ago or so, you were here on an entirely different project. Um, and a project at the time that we were excited about and, uh, went forward with and, uh, uh, up to the north of Reno. And then that project didn't happen. And we, of course, lost nothing in it, I mean, it was paid for by the developers. Um, but it never happened that we used the SAD in that way. And then, of course, I myself live inside of an SAD because I live in Somerset and I've had to pay the assessments. Uh, I think, maybe perhaps now they're paid off. Um, but I guess my question for you is, um, this one looks like it's going to go. I mean, I, I see the dirt moving up there, it's got, uh, 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 the Toll Brothers community, uh, home builders are a great, um, regional and national, uh, home builder. Um, what, what, what can you tell us about the reason why maybe one didn't go and one is going to go? Is it a, a change in leadership or, or what, what, what can you say to?
Yeah, thank you for that question. Um, I, I think, um, timing of projects is important. And, and the, the previous one you're talking about was, um, you know, it was much more of an aspirational project than an on-the-ground project. Um, and I, it, that project did not move forward, not because of the SAD, but for a variety of other reasons. Uh, this project, on the other hand, is, as you saw some of those pictures, um, it's happening. I mean, a lot of the, a lot of these water projects are already built out. So this SAD will actually reimburse some of those costs that have already been put out there. So, uh, this is not something that's going to happen years down the road. Uh, this is not something where we're going to be, um, trying to time when the bonds go out to when the construction would happen. Uh, it's already happening, so this, this is ready to go, homes are going to start being built in May. Um, and you know, we, we are dealing with putting water pipes in the ground, um, and tanks as we speak.
Yeah, I think that probably is the answer, is the timing is everything, right? And, and certainly, uh, of course, as, um, the Gias, we are interested in the success of every project that comes before us because your client's success is our success as a community and a region. And so, um, I'm very supportive, um, as, uh, Ms. Ebert said, this is an excellent way to make sure that we get infrastructure to areas that need it, uh, but don't require Tamwa or the city or some private water, um, entity to be involved in it. So it really does make sense that the use of this tool as a financing tool or an opportunity cost is really a good one. Um, so yeah, thank you so much for the presentation, I, I'm happy to support.
Thank you. Councilwoman Anderson. Councilwoman Martinez. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I just have, um, one quick question, not sure who it's for. It looks like there's about ten million dollars in other projects for the total build-out of it. Do we know where, where they're at with that? With BT South and Morton, Mortenson Ranch share?
Yeah, thank you for that question, so. Toll Brothers is covering the whole thing. Um, so when you're looking at that other ten million dollars, that's more of a reimbursement obligation than something else.
So this project goes with you guys, or that you're carrying the whole?
That's correct.
Oh, perfect, thank you.
Yeah.
Madam Mayor, do you have a question? Alright, go ahead, three minutes.
Um, I was just wondering, uh, Mr. Hicks, um, two things. One, how did the fire that was out there affect this land or your property?
Uh.
If at all?
I, it, there really wasn't any damage to the property. What I would say is I, I think that the property with all the grading that was going on out there, um, actually fortuitously acted as a nice fire break, um, to keep that fire from moving.
I heard that from someone else, but then I thought the next step, eventually houses will be there. And they would have been in direct path of the fire, and I just, I understand bare ground is a fire break. But houses are tinder, right? And I don't recall what requirements we put on the houses to have internal sprinkling, external. I know we had the fire station and that agreement was being reevaluated. Uh, it came to us that we wouldn't, the, 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 the Tembray Fire Dispatch Center was going to be eliminated and they wanted to take the money that you would have paid and put it into emergency vehicles down in Ward Two down south Reno. And, uh, we decided we didn't like that idea. We, we asked the staff to come back with a different idea. So I just wondered, it's, it's not, uh, I want the water out there, and I mean, you know, I've been supportive but of that, but, uh, I just wondered, you know, were they, they weren't affected because they were clearing, essentially. Um, okay, did, did they, uh, the other question was, I know it really bounces off what Councilwoman Taylor said. The, um, there are other developments that are dependent on the Tamwa water. And I think Meridian one twenty was one of those, and then they're going away, is that right?
I, I can't answer that, I don't represent them, but I, I, they're not actively building anything on the site right now.
So what I'm confused about is, I, I'm not sure, did you say you'll carry the entire cost of bringing water out through this SAD with no other participation from the other folks?
So let me go back to that slide.
I might have missed that slide, I'm sorry.
So this slide, um, shows you the different, um, responsibilities for the properties. So you, this is called BT South, but that's Meridian, so that's what that refers to. Uh, this is all pursuant to an annexation agreement that Tamwa has put in place with Toll. So when, uh, the properties at Meridian and when the properties at Mortenson Ranch get to the point where they want to connect, the water infrastructure will already have all been built out by Toll.
And your SAD will be paid back?
Well, it, I, it, I guess it depends when they actually develop the properties, the SAD is a thirty-year bond, so it may or may not be paid back.
But I mean, the idea is you would front-load the whole cost onto this SAD?
No.
No.
Uh, the SAD. Uh, the SAD can only cover what is the portion of the cost that benefits.
Let's say it's thirty percent, so.
So you can see it's about twenty-one point seven million, um, of the thirty-nine million. I'm not sure what percent that is.
So that's about half.
About half, yeah.
So you would pay for half. But who will pay for the other? Is it Tomwa? I, I'm just a little.
Tomwa has, um, a six point seven million dollar obligation. And then the, the rest of that's about the ten, about eleven million dollars that, um, Councilman Taylor talked about. That's covered by Toll and then they get a re, a right to a reimbursement.
That's what I was asking, do they get reimbursed or?
Get reimbursed from those other property owners when they connect.
Yeah, that's what I'm basically asking, is there reimbursement? Okay, and Tomwa will though pay. I mean, a lot of people said Tomwa won't pay, but they are gonna invest here.
They do have some, they do have.
Well, six million is what, I don't know, twenty percent of forty million or something?
Okay, all right, uh, Councilman Reese, this is your ward. Go ahead.
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor. Move to a crew staff recommendations.
All right, I have a motion. I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. All right, thanks so much.
Okay, for item E one, if we can have Mr. Shipman read the bill.
Yes.
Take it away.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Madam Clerk. This is gonna take a moment, so that's.
I know, it is.
So people need to take a break. Okay, so this is bill number seven, seven two eight zero and ordinance creating City of Reno, Nevada, twenty twenty-four, special assessment district number one, Quilsey Ranch, ordering a water project within the city of Reno, Nevada. Providing other matters related thereto. Related to the district for the project located in the Mortenson-Garson overlay district includes assessed parcel numbers, A P N's, the following. Zero three eight dash one ninety dash forty-eight, two three six dash zero one one dash zero four, two three six dash zero two one dash zero seven, two three six dash zero two one dash zero nine, two three six. Dash one eight one dash zero three, two three six dash one nine one dash zero one, two three six dash one nine one dash oh two, two three six one nine one dash. Oh, three, two three six dash one nine one dash oh four, two three six dash one nine nine. Dash oh five, two three six dash one nine one dash oh six, two three six dash one nine oh dash oh seven, two three six dash one nine one dash oh eight, two three six dash. One nine one dash oh nine, two three six. Dash one nine one dash one, uh, ten, um, just ten, uh, two three, two three six, one nine one dash eleven, two three six dash one nine one dash twelve, two three six one nine one dash thirteen, two three six dash one nine. Fourteen, two three six dash one nine one dash fifteen, two three six dash one nine one dash sixteen, two three six dash one nine one dash seventeen, two three six dash one nine one dash eighteen, two three six dash one nine one dash nineteen, two three six dash one nine one dash twenty, two three six dash one nine one. Dash twenty-one, two three six dash one nine one dash twenty-two, two three six dash one nine one dash twenty-three, two three six dash one ninety-one dash twenty-four, two three six dash one eighty-two dash one, zero one, two three six. Dash one nine two dash zero two, two three six dash one nine two dash zero three, two three six dash one nine two dash zero four, two three six dash one eighty-two. That's zero five, two three six dash one nine two dash zero six, two three six dash one nine two dash zero seven, two three six dash one nine, ninety-two dash oh eight, two three six dash one eighty-two dash oh nine, two three six. Dash one nine two dash one, dash ten, two three six dash one eighty-two dash eleven, two three six one nine, dash one ninety-two dash twelve, two three six dash one ninety-two dash thirteen, two three six dash one ninety-two dash fourteen, two three six dash one ninety-two dash fifteen, two three six dash one ninety-two dash sixteen, two three six dash two hundred and one dash zero one, two three six two oh one dash zero two, two, two three six dash two oh one dash zero three, two three six dash two oh one dash zero four, two three six dash two oh one dash zero five, two three six dash two oh two dash zero one, two. Three six dash two oh two dash zero two, two three six dash two oh two dash oh three, two, three six, two oh two dash oh four, two three six, two oh two dash oh five, two, three six. Dash two oh two dash zero six, two three six, two oh two dash oh seven, two three six, two oh two dash, uh, oh zero eight, two three six dash two oh two dash zero nine, two three six dash two oh two dash one zero, two three six, two oh two dash eleven and two three six, two oh two dash one two, Ward Five.
Move to refer.
I have a motion or a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All of the opposed, motion carries. Donovan, do you want to add another dash to that?
Yeah, I'm gonna add a couple more, unfortunately. Um, ordinance introduction, uh, bill number seven two eight one, an ordinance concerning the city of Reno, Nevada. To twenty twenty-four special assessment district number one, Quilsey Ranch, and assessing the cost of local improvements against the accessible property benefited by the local improvements and providing other matters related thereto related to the district for the project located within the Mortenson-Garson overlay district. And includes assessed parcel numbers. Zero three eight dash one nine, zero dash forty-eight, two three six dash zero one one dash zero four, two three six dash zero two one dash zero seven, two three six dash zero two one dash zero nine, two three six dash one eight one dash zero three, two three six dash one nine nine, one dash zero one, two three six dash one nine one dash zero two, two three six dash one nine one dash zero three, two three six dash one nine one dash zero four, two three six dash one nine one dash zero five, two three six dash one nine one dash zero six, two three six dash one nine one dash zero seven, two three six dash one nine one one eight, two three six dash one nine one dash. One nine, two three six dash one nine one dash two zero, two three six dash one nine one dash two one, two three six dash one nine one dash two two, two three six dash one nine one dash two three, two three six dash one nine one dash two four, two three six dash one nine one two, dash zero one, two three six dash one nine two dash zero two, two three six dash one nine two dash zeros three, two three six dash one nine two dash zero four, two three six dash one nine two dash zero five, two three six dash one nine two dash zero six, two three six dash one nine two dash zero seven, two three six dash one nine two dash zero eight, two three six dash one nine two dash zero nine, two three six dash one nine two dash. Ten, two three six dash one nine two dash eleven, two three six dash one nine two dash twelve, two three six dash one nine two dash thirteen, two three six dash one nine two dash fourteen, two three six dash one nine two dash fifteen, two three six dash. One nine two dash sixteen, two three six dash two oh one dash zero one, two three six dash two oh one dash zero two, two three six dash zero, two oh one dash zeros three, two three six dash two oh one dash zero four, two three six dash two oh one dash zero five, two, three six dash, two oh two dash zero one, two three six dash two oh two dash. Zero two, two three six, two oh two dash zero three, two three six, dash, two oh two dash zero seven, two three six, dash, two oh two dash zero eight, two three six, dash, two oh two dash, zero nine, two three six, two oh two dash, one zero, two three six, two oh two dash, one eleven and two three six, two oh two dash, twelve, Ward Five.
Very good.
Move to refer.
Don't check me.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All of the opposed, motion carries unanimously. Okay, Madam Clerk.
And this is ordinance number.
Bill number.
Yep, bill number seven two eight two, an ordinance authorizing an issuance and sale by the city of Reno of its two thousand twenty-four special assessment district number one, Quilsey Ranch, local improvement bonds. Series twenty twenty-five in the aggregate principal amount, not, of not to exceed twenty-six million, one hundred and ten thousand dollars, approving the form of certain documents with respect to such bonds, ratifying actions taken by city of officers toward the issuance of such bonds and providing other matters relating thereto, Ward Five.
Move to refer.
All right, I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. All right. Item D six, Madam Clerk. Thanks, everyone, for hanging out with us for most of the day. Sorry about that. Thanks, you guys. Okay, item D six is going to be, um. This is the one that we had a lot of public comment on, the electrical. Uh, contracting for lighting, um, the Truckee River Path. So who, who gets to present? You? All right, come on.
And Madam Mayor, we.
Do you have any public comment?
We do have public comment from Iris J. Lee Papard.
Okay, Iris, come on up.
Hello, Mayor, Council. Iris J. Lee Papard, One Truckee River Executive Director, One Truckee River, O T R is a nonprofit that manages a watershed coalition. Focused on the implementation of the One Truckee River Management Plan unanimously adopted by the three local jurisdictions. With a collaborative partnership of diverse perspectives, my comments provided are not of O T R as a whole. But are solely mine, with the organization's mission in mind to assure a healthy, thriving, sustainable river. Connected to the hearts and minds of its community. Nevada and Reno are known for our lights. They define, they define who we are in the downtown area. The Truckee River is the gem of our region. Our river corridor has the potential to be even better than other urban rivers across the nation because we still have a natural river corridor. A riverbank and a riverside parks with trees and wildlife running through the heart of the city. River wildlife needs darkness. Lighting along the river is needed, no doubt, for matters of safety that are critical. Yet how this lighting is done really matters. Many managing similar spaces across the coun, country are recognizing the importance of and sharing successes. With installing dark sky certified lighting where lighting is pointed downward, is only on the pathway. The light is warm and the lights are off at certain times in the night or have a motion sensor. I'm excited to see and support options presented where the lights will be pointed downwards. And from the, but from the staff report, I'm unclear with the map provided if the lights will only be on the pathway. Or will they be lighting the riverbank? I really appreciate the recent communication with city staff about these details. And I look forward to the presentation. Um, but what I currently see in the staff report, I also don't see that, uh, the lighting is dark side certified. Or, uh, the color of the lighting or, uh, the details of the timer or the motion sensors. I encourage the council to go with the bell shape or the solar powered option. And encourage the lighting approved to meet all three dark sky features mentioned. It will support our collaborative work together, current and future repairing the unique riverbank, ensuring we, we preserve this space for the Truckee River. Thank you for your consideration.
All right, Madam Mayor, with that, we have no additional in-person public comment. For the record, we did receive four comments that were written and have been distributed to the Reno City Council, three in support and one of concern.
Okay, thanks. Thank you.
Right. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and council members. I'm Justin George, Senior Civil Engineer for the Public Works Department. This item before you is for the selection of a light fixture style and for award of a construction contract to Titan Electrical Contracting for the Truckee River Path lighting project. Council previously allocated state and local fiscal recovery funds through the American Rescue Plan Act. To implement improvements for the Truckee River Vision Plan. At the June fifth meeting, council requested for staff to investigate Truckee River Path lighting improvements to the east of Lake Street. I have a short presentation to review the scope of the lighting improvements. Alignment with the city's strategic plan and Truckee River Vision Plan, and we'll have two motions. The first motion being to approve one light fixture style. And the second to award a construction contract. The Truckee River Path lighting project aligns with the following strategic plans. I wanted to shine light on the first title on this slide. There are many areas of this path that lighting levels are lacking. This project will enhance public safety for the first responders called out to the river path. For the river rangers who focus on the paths. And also the police officers that share a fence line with the river path at the public safety center. The second is that it will help secure our parks for the residents and visitors that want to utilize the river path at night. The third is that this project will maintain our infrastructure along the river path. So staff looked at the, the current light fixtures along the river path. As you can see in this image here, there are currently four different styles for the segments of river path that we're looking at. They're all in varying conditions and some of them are not dark sky compliant. These inconsistent lighting levels along the path, or it provides inconsistent lighting levels along the path, and there are many segments that are no longer working. So the Truckee River Path lighting project was before council, like I said, on June fifth, and the area of focus was along Riverside Drive. At that time, council asked staff to look at the river path lighting east of Lake Street. Public Works staff connected with Parks and O N M staff to identify lighting upgrades for the areas marked out in purple and blue on this image. This is nearly two miles of river path. As shown on the last slide, there are various styles of lights along this stretch and many light poles don't even function, leaving some segments unlit. We worked with our consultant and lighting reps to identify repairs and upgrades to. Address the Truckee River Vision Plan goals of providing consistent lighting throughout the corridor and address safety concerns. The segments of river path in purple on this image. Have infrastructure that can be repaired and upgraded to accommodate traditional hardwired lighting assemblies. The segments, these segments are the Riverside Drive segment from Booth Street to Ralston Drive. That's on the left side of the screen here. And east of Museum Drive to the pedestrian bridge at John Champion Park. That's that longer purple segment, kind of in the middle to the right of the screen. The segment of river path in blue doesn't have infrastructure that can be repaired. So we're pursuing solar light assemblies for the segments, for this segment, which is from the north side of the pedestrian bridge at John Champion Park. To the east through Fisherman's Park. What this project will include is the removal and replacement of light assemblies. Repairs to the conduit, wiring, pole boxes and service meters. And installation of anti vandalism upgrades throughout. We sought input from other local municipalities on what anti vandalism measures that they've found success with and have incorporated those into this project. We publicly bid this project in October, driven by council with accurate project costs. And included in that bid is the selection of one of two light styles shown that, shown there next to that, um, purple line on the bottom. For the hardwired segments. The cost difference is negligible between these two as we put out the bid as an either or for us to select one of those two options of lights. The solar light assembly shown for the blue segment matches the solar lights installed in other areas of the city. This is for uniformity and style and for more efficient maintenance in the future. Council allocated one point three million dollars to lighting upgrades on the river corridor. And with this project, we're asking for just over one million to award the construction contract today. Following the ward of this construction contract, Public Works will be seeking a two-year service contract. With some of those remaining ARPA funds that will cover maintenance and repairs to these lights through the end of the ARPA funding period, which is in December of twenty twenty-six. This will help offset the burden of parts maintenance staff and help keep this corridor continuously lit. So this, this slide shows the two options of hardwired light assemblies. Option one on the left is a traditional bell shaped fixture. Option two on the right is a modern round shaped fixture. I wanted to address some of the feedback we, we received from stakeholders about upgrading to energy efficient L A D light fixtures. Along the river corridor. All light fixtures we're proposing are dark, dark sky compliant. We worked with the lighting manufacturer reps to select an elongated light pattern that illuminates the river paths. While trying to minimize impact to the surrounding riverbank. The light color for these fixtures is a warm color. And we have also incorporated astronomical timers, which parts has found to provide the most reliable timing mechanisms. For controlling when lights switch on and off at recreational facilities. This next slide is a rendering showing these two options in a segment of the river path downtown. Again, on the left is option one, that traditional bell shaped fixture. On the right is option two, that modern round shaped fixture. This rendering here shows that solar light fixture out along that segment, um, east of John Champion Park. So the first motion before you today is for selection of the light fixture type. And the second motion is to award construction contract to Titan Electrical Contracting. That concludes my presentation.
Um, but you have the, uh, solar option.
Correct.
I, it just said between the two.
So. There is one sol, so we've got these. Two distinct sections of lighting along the river. That purple se, section is where we have a, a traditional hardwired light. So we've got the infrastructure there to light those with, uh, you know, electricity coming from the grid. Which is gonna be, um, I think a, a longer, a, a better option for this. It will provide us light styles. We have the selection to choose from. And we only looked at the solar op, option. option for that blue segment from the John Champion Park to Fisherman's Park because the infrastructure there is not in a condition where we can upgrade it and get it back into a working function. So a solar light fixture is one. We could plant a light there, and it'll run off of the solar, and we don't have to tie it into the grid. So we only looked at solar for that one option, and we've got the kind of more architectural options for the hardwired section in purple.
Um, wouldn't the solar, though, be better? I mean, I...
I think she's saying for the whole thing.
I think long term, solar does come with some obstacles. You do have batteries that you will eventually have to replace once they, yep, once they do wear out. The other thing, too, is the tree canopy. That east segment in blue, it is kind of a more open tree canopy, lights we can place outside of the tree canopy to light them. A lot of the purple segments that we see there, especially from Museum Drive through, um, through John Champion Park, there's a lot of tree cover there. So a solar option wouldn't work. And similarly, along Ralston Drive, a lot of those, those lights are underneath the tree canopy, so solar option won't work there. So that's why we're looking at the, the main reason we're looking at hardwired for the purple segments is the tree canopy covering the solar.
That makes sense. Thanks for the explanation. I appreciate it. Councilwoman Taylor.
Vice Mayor. I guess my comments are, I don't have necessarily preference on one or two. I would say if there's a maintenance advantage, one or the other, or cost, one or the other, a preference from the technical engineering team, that would be my, I would, I would go in that direction. Thank you.
So the one thing with the LED fixtures for those two options, it is the same type of fixture, the same type of LED that goes up in there. So we checked with our installers, we checked with Parks and Rec staff, and I think the, the challenges are similar. Cost is negligible between the two, and it pretty much comes down to style.
Okay, I guess I'd, I'd like the bell style better. Weren't you able to secure more, a longer section of path because you guys did something fantastic? I can't remember what it was.
So back in June 5th, we were looking at that Riverside Drive segment. So that is that small segment to the left of the screen here. So just from Booth Street to Ralston. So we looked at that, the, the other purple segment east of Lake Street. So that's what we added after we came to council last, was the segments to the east.
So we're, uh, we'll be expecting you to get more with less coming, coming in the future, too.
We try our best.
Thank you.
All right, Councilman Martinez.
Thanks so much, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Mr. George, for the presentation. I just wanted to highlight what Council Vice Mayor highlighted, is just the portions that were added to the east, and appreciate extending the connectivity out that way. Thank you.
Councilwoman Anderson, anything?
Is this where we're saying what our preferences are? I also like the bell shape better.
All right, um, Councilwoman.
Thank you so much, Mr. George. Are these both of the bell and the modern, are they dark sky friendly? There was a comment that Ms. J. Papard asked about that.
Yep, the, the bell and modern shape are both dark sky compliant. I checked the darksky.org website, and both of these fixtures were listed on their website. The solar option also is in compliance with dark sky requirements.
Well, I refuse to opine about which one I prefer. I just don't have any design aesthetic ability to add to the conversation.
I did want to ask one quick question, because you, you would probably know this, too. Is the bell, it goes down, but the other one, it looks like it would emit this way? So, or am I seeing it wrong?
So if you take a look at this voter here, I think that gives a better representation. That previous one, that's kind of a side shot. So you're looking at it from the side, or from, as you would be down at the street. But if you see here, that kind of rounded shape, the little dome on top of it, keeps that light.
I, I just, this is just my preference. This is weird whenever you have to, like, choose style and all that, because every, it's so subjective. But I would say, just my thought processes over in that area, it's very traditional with brick, it's older. So I think the appearance of a bell shape is much more traditional looking, but that's just my, my thought on it, for sure. So you sort of stay in the lines of the design of the neighborhood, I think adds sort of the charm to it. Anyway, that's just me. Go ahead.
Yeah, thanks. So I'm going to add a fourth vote for the bell. I also agree with my colleagues. I just think it's more aesthetically pleasing for that area. And whether or not they're both dark sky compliant, the bell shape implies that it is dark sky. It reads more dark sky compliant. In addition to Ms. Papard's comment, you know, we also got a comment from the Conservation Committee from Audubon, and they reiterated two things that you said, one being dark sky, but the second being the warm bandwidth for the light that it was preferable. So I appreciate, I just wanted to reference her comment and thank Ms. Papard for being here as well to give voice to the comment, you know, if I wasn't here and reading this. But I just appreciate having the lights. It'll be amazing. One thing I'm a little confused about, I know we're closing our parks, I think they close at dark. And I just want to make sure, I know we need light, but I also was thinking, we're not even encouraging people to be on these paths in dark. Is that correct?
Thanks for the question. Nathan Olia Parks, Recreation Director, for the record. I think when it comes to the, the river path, as far as, like, transitioning through it and traveling through it, we're not discouraging that because it's a contiguous path.
Well, the reason I ask is we just made them part of the park.
Exactly.
And the parks have opening and closing hours.
That's right.
And what are those hours?
Uh, in the, from October through the end of March, it's from 6:00 AM to 7:00 PM, and then it changes in the summer from 5:00 AM to 10:00 PM.
Okay.
In the other alternating months.
Right. So it gets a little dark before seven and before 10:00. But, right. So anyway, I thought it said sunrise to sunset initially, whatever it is. But anyway, glad we're doing it. Give my vote over to Bell, and thank you for, you know, complying with the request.
I'm also going to go for the bell shape. I just think it looks nicer, more like traditional park lighting. The, the other one's kind of cool, modern looking, but I'm just imagining people, like, throwing stuff up there, to be honest. Like, we have things that happen in my ward where there's banners for art that got hung on Sky Vista Parkway. Before we got the art hung up there, people had pulled some of the bars down. So I'm just imagining people doing pull-ups and stuff, not that they would necessarily be able to reach that, but that's just kind of where my mind goes. But I also agree that the bell shape looks nicer, and I think it, to Councilmember Doerr's point, it just kind of gives that more, um, uh, appearance of a dark skies type of lighting. And I've also just had constituents personally reach out to me with concerns about the dark skies. So I'm really happy to see that they're, you know, both of them are compliant with that. So, thank you.
Right. Make a motion.
Let's get a motion.
Yeah, sure. And this is item, I think, D six.
This is Councilwoman Vice Mayor's word.
The whole thing, and some is in, I think, Word Three, too. But anyway, do you prefer to make the motion? Oh, all right. Well, I'll just make a motion to approve item D six with the bell lighting structure and the other parameters you've provided. Thank you.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
And then for motion B, move to award the contract to Titan Electrical Contracting, an amount not to exceed $1,2,100 for the Truckee River Path Lighting Project.
All right, I have a motion. I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you so much, Carrie, for all your hard work, because you guys know that I've braked you over the coals with this, this Truckee River Path. But it's going to happen, and it's going to be beautiful, and people are going to be able to enjoy it. It's going to be safe. So I'm really, really proud. Thank you for your hard work, because like I said, I know I've been really tough on you and Iris for your comments, too. I hope that makes you feel better, Iris. Yes, okay. Thanks so much. Okay, um, Madam Clerk.
Madam Mayor, we're on item H one, City Council Comments.
All right, I'm going to make a comment. If you guys don't have any comments, does anyone have any comments?
I think I had one comment, but you...
Councilwoman Nieber, I'm going to go with you first.
Okay, I just wanted to say that Black Friday Day after Thanksgiving, there's going to be a fundraiser at Uncle Junkie's downtown from 2:00 to 4:00 PM. It's a fundraiser to help sponsor some of the cooking classes for Reno seniors. So if anybody wants to come or can come, it's before the tree lighting ceremony. So hopefully somebody can come down. So that's it. Thank you.
All right. And I guess I was confused. Are you going to be cooking?
No, we're not going to be cooking. It's just a fundraiser to just raise funds to kind of keep the cooking classes going and maybe expand them a little bit. We had over 100 people show up today. So they're growing. It's really well attended. People love them. So just want to do what we can to expand what we could do for our seniors here. So.
Okay, Councilwoman Doerr.
Um, my comment is that we had a joint meeting in Western Regional Water Commission with the Northern Nevada Water Planning, and they discussed top priorities for water infrastructure. It was a multi-hour meeting. But one of the outcomes I wanted everybody to know is that we voted to move forward with an assessment of regionalizing sewer. So that's Reno, Sparks, Washoe County. They're going to do a study. They're going to look at what all sewer projects there are, who's running them. And as a side note, some, most of them are providing reclaimed water. How are they charging for that reclaimed water? It's different in every jurisdiction and every location. So some people pay something, some people don't, some people get it for free, some people get it at cost, some people look, you know, are upset about what they pay, et cetera. So they're going to look at it all. But as part of it, too, we asked them to look at stormwater. Everyone here knows we made a very valiant effort to set up a stormwater utility. We decided to pause that and look at regional stormwater. This doesn't quite go there, but in doing the sewer project, all of the sewer groups also do stormwater. So they're going to by necessity look at both, and they're going to come back to us and with some recommendations. So I wanted everybody to know what's going on, because it's a major topic of conversation. Going back 10 years ago, we sat at Truckee Meadows Regional Planning and a Strategic Planning Workshop, and virtually every jurisdiction, every rep said the number one impediment to growth was sewer, lack of sewer capacity. And so here we are, 10 years later, and we're trying to take a very important step to potentially regionalize that. So just wanted to share with everyone on that. Got a few more things, but one thing I wanted to mention, and this will come up later, we, because of Nevada Department of Agriculture was going to participate with us on the fence for the horses. But they ran into trouble because BLM has required them to do an EIS, which is going to cost over $1 million. So their, their portion of the project is at least a year out. So we have to, probably two, because actually they have to get the money, then they have to do the study, then blah, blah, blah. So we are looking to close the gap, and one of the ways is that I asked the Wild Horse Connection to do a fundraiser, and they are, and they're exceeding what they had hoped, they had hoped to raise $10,000 in 30 days, but it looks like they're going to raise 15. So I just wanted people to know what's going on, and if you have an interest in contributing to that, go for it. And I'm sure we'll hear more about this in coming meetings.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? No, I, one thing I'm just going to bring to everyone's attention, usually I go around, I try to make sure everyone gets their comments in. As we move forward, I'm not going to do that. So if you want to speak, you're going to have to push your button, and the reason you're going to want to do that is Madam Clerk is going to help me. You might have to say, hey, hey, wait a minute, because sometimes I know we get going. But I just want to point that out, that I won't continue to go around. I'm only going to call on you if you want to speak. Is that okay?
Madam Mayor, can I ask for the clerk, do we, I thought at some point in time, the system allowed us to push a button saying, I wish to speak.
It does, doesn't it?
Can we sort of get back on track with that, new council, new look kind of thing?
We absolutely can. The only, I will say, the only computer it will display on is mine and Madam Mayor's. So I will make sure that she and I get together and that we're on the same page with proceeding in that fashion.
And you might have to interrupt me and say, I'd like to speak, or, and I'm fine with that. But I, like I said, I don't want to keep going around, because oftentimes...
Nobody wants to.
Right. And so I just want to make our meetings as streamlined as possible.
I think it's a good idea.
Okay.
Are you saying that's just for the end portion or the whole thing? Okay, okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Okay. Anything else? No? And how, how are you feeling? You made it. You survived your first meeting. Good for you. Okay, that's great. Councilwoman Anderson. Okay, anything else? No? Then I'm going to send it to Councilwoman Anderson. I think is this our favorite motion?
Oh, Madam Mayor, before we close, can I just do closing public comment? We did receive two letters of concern after 4:00 PM yesterday. Both of those have been distributed to the council and are part of the permanent record. And so now you are ready to take a motion to adjourn.
Okay, go ahead. Councilwoman Anderson.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, good job. I have a motion, a second. All of them in favor say aye.
Aye.
All of the opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, guys. Thanks, everyone.